Good evening and welcome to the township of Woolwich Committee of the Whole Meeting on October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are now live on YouTube and Rogers. It's great to see all those attending in person and welcome to everyone tuning into the live stream. I will now do a roll call of council. I councillor Bryant and present at chairing this meeting. Mayor Shance?
Present.
Councillor Burgess?
Present.
Councillor Kado?
Present.
Councillor Grant?
Present.
And councillor Schwend?
Present.
Thank you. We have, okay, public resolution to move into open session. Do I have a mover? Mister? Mister Burgess, a secondar, councillor Grant, all in favor? And that would be carried. Land acknowledgement. I would like to acknowledge the land on which we live has been here from time immemorial and that indigenous peoples have lived here from time immemorial. I want to thank the Chanotan, also called the Atawandaran, the Anashabe and the Hodenosene. Who have lived here and cared for this land and who continue to share and steward this land with us. May we together learn to care for each other, our flora, fauna and the land that sustains us. Council, do we have any disclosures of pecuniary interests? Mayor Shance?
Yes, I have a pecuniary interest in eight point two George Street, High Street and Charles Street. My son lives in that subdivision.
Thank you. Do we have any other with council? Seeing none? Items to come forward from closed? We have none? Public meeting? This meeting constitutes the formal public meeting required under section forty-two of the Drainage Act. Under section forty-two of the Drainage Act, council must hold a meeting to give all property owners affected by the drain an opportunity to withdraw their signature from a petition, add their signature to a petition and influence council's decision whether to adopt the engineer's report. Item? Six point one, the Breslaw Drain. I will now ask the Director of Infrastructure Services, Jared Poupay and engineer Joel Miller from K Smart Associates to present the report.
Thank you Chairman Bryant and through you to members of council. I am happy to be able to bring this report to, for council's consideration today. This is a longstanding report that we have been anxiously awaiting. In, in contained in the staff report is some background surrounding the strain. This is historical flooding issues in the Elroy Acre subdivision area that people have been dealing with for, for quite a while. We have received some petitions back in two thousand and eighteen that sort of perpetuated this process and a preliminary report was approved by council moving forward and that was the election of K Smart Engineering to review this. So a lot of has happened since that time, a number of complications and Breslaw with respect to development around this area. We have an existing built up area and lack of drainage is, is really the coals notes of all of this. So I think a lot of work has happened, a lot of public engagement has happened as you can attest by members of the community in the audience today. So this is work that has been needed for quite some time and I think that that is why we are here this evening. Council has really needs to determine whether this report is to be referred back to the engineer and instruct the engineer to make changes or if, if council may decide to terminate the project entirely. So I think that's really what we're here to today is to assess the overall project and, and determine whether this is appropriate to move forward. Without further ado, we do have Joel Miller, our drainage appointed drainage engineer who can speak much more intelligently on the process and his report.
Good evening, members of council. Technical difficulties already. Thank you for this opportunity to provide a quick summary of the Breslaw Drain One report that I authored. My name is Joel Miller and with K Smart Associates and where the firm that was appointed, pointed under the Drainage Act for this report. In case anyone's wondering, I've just begun puberty. Given the way my voice sounds tonight. No, as it happens, I feel great, but I, I had a bit of a sore throat last week. So you're stuck with this for now. I have a very short presentation to try to highlight the major points related to this project that I think are important for council to be aware of. And then after my presentation, I'll be happy to entertain any questions. On this title slide, you can basically see two different aerial photography maps showing the root of the drain. One, as it was originally constructed in nineteen fifty-four, predominantly in agricultural watershed and then present day shown below that as the first drawing that's in the drawing set in the report. So let's go ahead to the next slide. So as I said, it's, it's been, it's a drain that's been around over seventy years now. And this is just one of thirty municipal drains drainage works under the Drainage Act here in the township of Woolwich. And the work that's proposed in my report would have an entire drain length that's around thirty-seven hundred meters. So a thousand, the downstream end of this system is, is an open ditch. It's about a thousand meters and then we have twenty-seven hundred meters or so worth of pipe that are being recommended by this report. Go to the next slide. So as Jared alluded to, the impetus for the project was petitions from landowners for improved drainage. And under the Drainage Act, when you have an existing drain, you can submit a request under section seventy-eight to have the thing improved. Or if you need the drain moved to a different location or to serve a different land use, then you can sign a section four petition. So those were the original sort of causes that brought the process into play. We got involved in late twenty eighteen. In that photo there, you can see a, an example of where the bubbles are coming out just past the snow pile. That's actually an existing manhole that's on the existing drain that's discharging water. So typically you'd want to drain catch basin to receive water, but in this case it, it is overloaded and that's what's shown in that picture. So that happens during severe melt events or rainfall events. Next slide. So as Jared alluded to, there was study done initially under the Drainage Act through what was called a preliminary report that took about a year. There were a couple of public meetings that, that looked at a very, a number of different options for how we would better serve this current watershed as, as it is today with adequate storm drainage. And at the conclusion of that preliminary report phase, K Smart was instructed to put a final report together. And that's what you have before you today. That's to be considered. This map on it has a bunch of little numbers and labels and those are the, the sizes of the pipes that are proposed under this project in millimeters. So just for, for reference, near the south end of that map along Woolwood Street, there's a yellow a yellow line that represents the proposed new storm drain and we're proposing that it be a four foot pipe and that's the size needed. Forty-eight inches is twelve hundred millimeters. That's the size that's needed just to put the urban storm drainage infrastructure to current standards. Currently it's, it's an old twelve inch farm drain tile. So significant upsizing is necessary just to put this thing in line with the way we design drainage infrastructure in urban areas today. Then the, the second bullet there alludes to the fact that to the east of the Elroy Acre subdivision where you can see that green line shown that represents another proposed pipe under my report known as the Scarlet Branch. But there was a second petition that came along partway through our process that was brought to council and received and I was instructed to address that petition through the same report and that petition was submitted by the development lands that lie between Fountain Street and Elroy Acres. And so that green line is, is a part of the system, just an upstream extension of the Breslaw Drain. That's exclusively for the the, to address the drainage needs of a portion of the development lands and I'll explain this further as we go along. Let's continue on. Okay. Yeah. So I pretty well already explained the first bullet. One thing that's significant for council to be aware of is that we've worked with township staff as well as the consultants for the development team to understand what the proposed stormwater management strategy is for that block of agricultural land as it's in the development process. And the township stepped forward very early on, staff stepped forward very early on and explained, we have a, we have a neighborhood with a history of drainage issues. And the last thing is that would be helpful would be to see a land use change that caused a negative effect on that existing neighborhood. And so that north to south red dashed arrow illustrates the stormwater management strategy that the townships working with the developer to see incorporated in their engineering drawings by which, and I've illustrated this in the second bullet. When the land is regraded and it's a significant regrading. The natural, the natural low land comes east to west out of that wetland and then down towards Elroy Road, which is the little S curved road that's highlighted in yellow. Once the green line is installed and the land is regraded as shown. We're talking about a reduction from twenty-eight hectares of contributing land down to one hectare. So it's a huge reduction of contributing flow and that's a good news story for the downstream system. So let's continue on to the next, next page. And this, this illustrates, this is not intended to really be read. It's more just a graphic that shows the, the map by which we determine the sizes for these pipes. So we've sized the piping system you see here based on the post-development condition where there is a redirection of flow from the east. So we're not overbuilding a system based on a, a large current watershed that will be subsequently reduced under post-development, but what we've actually done is designed the system for that post-development scenario based on, you know, drawings that are available to date. And so from twenty-eight hectares, we're now talking under post-development conditions, just a little strip, that green highlighted area that would come into our system. And again, it would come into our system, developers going to pay for all that cost of that pipe. And then they're paying their fair share of the cost of the pipe downstream of that as well. So finally, I'll just say again, current standards would be for drains in an urban area to be designed to a five-year, five-year storm. And then when we cross private land, because a portion of this system serves historically developed residential properties where lot grading that had a positive outlet towards a, a road right of way was not necessarily the approach at the time. So we've got these depressional rear yards that are historic flooding issues. So we've as, as we are under the Drainage Act, we go wherever we need to go to deal with the drainage issues and that includes private land. So where we're on private land, we've designed it to, to your standard. Let's continue on. As I said, the downstream part of the drain is shown here in blue. So where that black line diverges east from Woolwood Street, it goes into a provincially significant wetland. There's no work that is necessary to be done in the provincially significant wetland. It's already a municipal drain. It's been there since nineteen fifty-four when it's dug. We do need to do some ditching improvements downstream of the wetland and clean out the ditch downstream of Woolwood Street as well. And the culvert under Woolwood Street's in good shape. It has good structural condition and adequate capacity under even post-development conditions. So there's no work there at Woolwood Street, basically a ditch cleanup. And then we've engaged with the downstream lands who are the current recipients of all the flow from this watershed. They're aware of the project. They don't have any concerns. We're more, more or less maintaining the status quo in terms of where the water discharges onto their property. Next slide. Okay, this is the exciting slide that, that lets us all realize this is a big job. Estimated cost is at five point six five million dollars of that constructions there for four point six. There's engineering in there for the preliminary report phase as well as the final report phase. There are sub consultants involved here for geotechnical investigation and all the rest. And then construction administration. And then under the, under the Drainage Act, there's also other costs related to administering the project. Allowances refer to money that is paid under the Drainage Act to landowners when we have to make use of their property to, to run a pipe or to dig a ditch. So those, those are costs that are all rolled into the project. And then, like I said, section seventy-three allows for certain costs associated with temporarily temporarily financing the cost of the project if needed. And those are included there as well. So we'll just continue on. We're almost done. Thanks for hanging in there. This gives you a high level understanding of how that five point six breaks down. All of the residential properties in the watershed plus, plus or minus a hundred and fifty folks collectively contribute about five hundred thousand to the job. Commercial properties near the downstream end are, are involved for about a hundred thousand. The region has a very minimal assessment simply because we're not doing any work on their right of way. We're not doing this project for their benefit. They just happen to be the owners of Fountain Street. So they get to chip in for that. Development lands, it should be seen as contributing a significant chunk of the cost and that's spelled out in my report. We'll deal, and I've listed this down at the bottom, we, we'll deal in detail with assessment questions or appeals at a separate venue, the quarter provision. Tonight's focus is for me to just give you all a, an overview of the project, what we're planning to do. And then assessment questions will be dealt with later, but what, what is clear in my report is that any part of this project that's being undertaken because of the land use change from agricultural to developed. That cost is borne by the developer and it's very clear in my report how certain changes we're making in the system are assessed to the developer. For example, at the downstream end of the system, just upstream of that wetland, it's currently an open ditch which runs through a farm field. Were that to stay a farm field forever, we would just dump our pipe into the ditch. But that's not the case. So we have to put that in a really big expensive pipe. The developer's paying the full cost of, of all that work that's being undertaken for their needs. So that needs to be stated. And that's where the breakdown is. The township is also on the hook for a considerable share of the cost. It's a, it's part of that's due to the way the Drainage Act is written, extra costs related to the presence of a road are assessed to the township. And we've worked through this with township staff. So things like paving and some of the other boulevard type costs are all in there. And then the township as the owner of this infrastructure that floods on a regular basis also benefits from the project. So there's this considerable assessment there to the township. Next slide. This real quick. Again, not going to talk anymore about assessments after this slide, except I thought it was useful and important for everyone to see in general where the ranges of assessment dollars lie. So near the downstream end of the system, residential properties along Menno Street, for example, they don't use a lot of the system. They have a fairly low assessment. As you work your way further up into the system, the way the Drainage Act works, the more of the drain you use, the more of it you chip in for. So some of the, some of the properties further up in this system need more infrastructure for their drainage and so their share of the cost is higher. So I'll leave it at that for now, but I guess, I guess the takeaway from that map, right, would be that we're talking for a lot of the residential properties. This is not an insignificant number. You know, definitely north of a thousand, most are south of six thousand. So somewhere in that two to, two to five thousand dollar range. And these assessment amounts have been, were presented at a public meeting during the preliminary report phase in twenty nineteen. We've shared them recently in twenty twenty-two at our last public meeting. So these are numbers that have been, if you will, on the street for a while. Let's continue to the next slide. Oh, I'm done. There it is. So I'm happy to take any questions now. I don't know what the next step in the process is.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Does council have any questions for Mr. Poupay or Mr. Miller? Mayor Shance?
Thank you. I have a question about using a five-year storm. Has the definition of five-year storm been updated in the last five years? Because it's changing, right? So we want this to last for more than five years.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Shance. That's a good question. The, the the definition of a five-year storm is the storm that has twenty percent chance of occurring in any one year. So the five-year storm is the standard that's continued to be used by the region of Waterloo. You know municipalities design guidelines for for urban drainage design. So what happens in this system, and this is kind of one of the things. One of the things we included in our report is, is a chart that illustrates what happens to the water in the system when we have a, a higher intensity storm, something that's sort of quote unquote more rare, but happening more frequently. And so when we did our design, we followed MOE's guidelines for the way our urban storm sewers should be designed using, using the five-year storm, but we also prepared a dynamic hydraulic, hydrologic and hydraulic model. And this report lists where does the water come up to inside these manholes for the twenty-five-year event or the fifty-year event or the one hundred-year event. And what, what we see in this table in the report is that actually for well in excess of the five-year storm, all of the water stays underground. The pipe, the pipe might be full, pipes three, four meters deep, pipe might be full. The water can actually rise up inside that manhole barrel. And the throughput, the throughput for the system actually increases considerably as you have a little extra water stacked up in those manholes. So what this, what this illustrates, this table in the report is that for well in excess of the twenty-five-year event, all of the water stays in the system even. So there's a fair bit of conservatism built into that five-year methodology. It's a good question.
Thank you. And, and we'll call you if, if it doesn't work right.
Please, please call me.
Any other questions, council? See councillor Burgess?
The residential portion that they'll have to pay. What does that look like for the residents for paying that back? Is that stuck on their property tax bill that they need to pay within the year? Can that be amortized longer? How does that work?
That is a good question. I may have Jared speak to that.
Through you Chair Bryant to councillor Burgess. We have discussed the idea of a potential amortization. Believe that we were talking in the, the order of about a ten-year term. So there would be the ability that after, and again, costs won't be assessed or assigned until after all the work is complete. So there is time. If we were to play this out, it's likely that, so let's assume for instance, that if this was endorsed and proceeded to tender work would not begin until next year, two thousand and twenty-four, it would take the bulk of two thousand and twenty-four potential carryover in two thousand and twenty-five. So there wouldn't be any billings likely until late twenty-five, early twenty-six. At which time then it would be determined what that rate would look like. So it would always be prime plus. And, but there would be the ability to, to spread that out over a term of up to ten years. The idea then in, in just following along with how we've dealt with similar projects through a special service levy would be that you would amortize that amount. You could you could then pay it all off, but you wouldn't be able to increase the payments throughout. It's not like a bank. So you would be stuck on that regular payment cycle is, is how that would work.
Any other questions, council? No, seeing none. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay, we have registered participants who wish to speak to the report. Our first registered participant is David Koschak. I hope I said that properly. Please begin when you're ready, David.
Thanks for leaving that alone for me, Joel. Anyway, I guess this is on, but yeah, I had to come to council to see my friend got a promotion the last time I was here. So anyway, I just want to say one thing. The proposal, if I read it right, states that the proposed burn will, the township will maintain the burn. Unless I misread the thing and I would, I would rather the developer maintain the burn.
I can answer that question, so.
Through Chair Bryant to, to David Colchis. Yes, sir. That is correct. That the burn would be the responsibility of of the municipality looking after the maintenance, which will be built through the development. If I'm correct in reading with that burn is, that's correct. That's correct. Yeah, the, the, I think David, the, the, the drain is now bypassing is the point here is we are bypassing your property. Currently it runs through Mr. Colchis' property. And yep, so that is bypassing going down and yes, the burn would be, would be part of that. Yes.
But not the, not the taxpayers. Of Elroy Acres. You said the developer would be billed.
So the correct, absolutely. That's correct. Yes, sir. Yes, that is correct. Yes.
Well, that's fine. And I had a couple of other questions, but Joel, being that this meeting lasted longer before we started, he, he answered the question. So that's my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. So we see some questions. Okay, next we have Christian Lamana and Ryan Chin of Mad West Breslaw and Woolwich South Holdings Limited. You may begin when you're ready.
Good evening. Christian won't be attending, but through you, Madam Chair. My name is Ryan Chin. I'm representing Mad West Breslaw and Woolwich South Holdings. I'm here to express our support for the Breslaw Drain. We believe that the drain would benefit existing and future residents in the area. And that would alleviate a lot of the drainage issues that currently exist within Elroy Estates. We'd also like to thank K Smart and municipal staff for their ongoing work on bringing this report to council. And we look forward to continue working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, council for Mr. Chin? No, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this project or wish to add or withdraw their name from the petition? No, seeing none. Since there's nothing further with respect to this matter, I declare the public meeting to be closed. We have a resolution before you, council that the council of Woolwich consider report IS nineteen, two thousand and twenty-three respecting the Breslaw Drain. Do I have a mover and a secondar for this one? Councillor Grant? Councillor Kado? Any further discussion? All those in favor? And that would be carried. Thank you. Presentations. Township of Woolwich Environmental Enhancement Committee presenting the Care Awards to Toyota Busukka. This evening, we have a presentation by Inga Rennie and Connor Ehrlich of the Township of Woolwich Environmental Enhancement Committee who are presenting the Care Awards. Inga?
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, your worship council members. Connor Ehrlich here as Chair of Tweak and I as Chair of Trees for Woolwich are really pleased to be here this evening to present the Community Award Recognizing Environmental Stewardship here in afternoon as cares because I can barely get it out once. And I'm really pleased to be presenting this this evening to Toyota Busuku, Canada. Cares, as you can see, was created to encourage and recognize environmental leadership by local businesses, organizations or individuals. That leadership can take the form of either financial support for some of our environmental initiatives or initiatives that they undertake independently on their own. In the case of Toyota, they have done both. You may know Toyota Busuku as the big plant down on Southfield that produces seats for Toyota cars. I would encourage you to go out sometime and have a look at their property. It's, they've really done a lovely job. So first of all, in terms of their work with the community, Toyota Busuku has been a supporter of Trees for Woolwich dating back to two thousand and sixteen when they provided seed money for the first tree giveaway. That giveaway started modestly and has now grown to the two-day tree giveaway event that's happening this Wednesday and Saturday. Check the township page for details. They then when the Elmira Nature Reserve was created in two thousand and twenty, Toyota was the first corporation to step up with multi-year funding for that reserve. And that five-year funding commitment really made a huge difference to us in terms of the ability to, to plan on a, on a inefficient and forward-going basis. Additionally, Toyota employees have come out and helped plant at the nature reserve. On their own property, Toyota has undertaken a tree planting program in conjunction with Trees for Woolwich. And over the past three years, they have planted over a hundred trees on their, on their property. So that is the, they've taken beautiful care of those, of those trees. They are flourishing and they are contributing to the increase in our, our tree canopy slow but sure. But that's not all. They have undertaken a substantial amount within their own plant and Connor is going to tell us about those.
Yeah, so, some points I have here, since twenty nineteen, they have been zero waste. So they don't, don't send anything to landfill. They don't have any recycling. They take care of it all in their, all in-house. They also collect rainwater and HVAC condensation and use that in their water supply to minimize their use from municipal waters. And they've also reduced their energy consumption by dimming lights and installing energy efficient and and piloting more efficient air conditioning. That's just a few things. They've started green teams, just like lots of businesses around. And they're working to become carbon neutral at some point, and also looking at carbon offsets. So lots to commend them for, and hopefully other businesses in, in township take some notes too, because great initiatives from them.
It's, it's a combination of all of those initiatives. I think that make Toyota a real environmental leader in our community. We're very fortunate to have their support over the last number of years. Jason Sotka, who is here this evening from Toyota Bushuku, and who will receive the award. I should say, this is a, has been, been handcrafted by a local stained glass artist, Lori Speaker, and woodworker Matt Cowan. So, Jason, I am very pleased to provide Toyota Bushuku with that. We look forward to working with them.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Thank you. This is really amazing. Again, my name is Jason Pasutka. I'm representing Toyota Bushuku Canada. And our sincere thanks and gratitude to Inga and everyone else at Trees for Woolwich and all the other help that we've had over the years. Thank you so much. I feel very fortunate to work for Toyota Bushuku Canada. It's a very rewarding role, my role. It's energy environmental. And my management team, and their management team, and on and on and on, all the way goes right back to Japan, give us increasingly stringent targets every year. So they ask us to reduce our water consumption. They ask us to reduce any waste that we generate, and the energy that we use in our processes, they always ask us to reduce. And I feel very fortunate for those goals that are given to us. As an employee there, I want to work in a place, and I want to live and act in the community that respects nature and the environment. So I feel very fortunate for that as well. And the team members that I talked to repeatedly over the years, they've said that they want to work for a place that respects the environment. So I'm thinking that receiving this award tonight, this recognition shows alignment between what our team members ask for, what I see when I work there in the community that I live in, and hopefully the township. So for that, we're very thankful. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have delegations. Before we get started with that, I would like to remind the delegates of the guidelines for participating. On this section of the agenda, delegations have seven minutes unless counsel or the clerk has set a different amount of time. After you speak, please wait for questions from counsel. Once there are no further questions, you may return to your seat. You can leave anytime if you wish, or you're more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. So the first one we have is the Waterloo Economic Development Corporation Memorandum of Understanding Renewal. First, we will hear from Chief Administrative Officer David Brenneman, and then we will invite delegates Tony La Mancha and Lucinda Wallace to speak. David?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to counsel, I'm pleased to be able to present this report this evening. Quite a number of years ago, right across this region, the region itself, the three cities in the four townships certainly got together and looked at the, the model that we had in place for regional economic development. And at the time, it was called Canada's Technology Triangle. We wanted to make improvements and, and look at changes. And, and we did so back a number of years ago, as the report outlines. That resulted in the creation of what is before us today, the Waterloo Economic Development Corporation. And this has certainly been a successful project, or a successful partnership and collaboration in the sense of the region and three cities in the four townships are supportive of the notion that all for one, one for all. And I say that in the, in the spirit of, it makes no sense in our two-tiered system for us to compete against one another in terms of the economic development opportunities that we want to pull into this region. Sure, you know, there's any city or township certainly want the support of new industry and new business, absolutely. But we are also all regional taxpayers, and at the end of the day, if a new business is attracted to the region, ultimately, we all benefit. And there are opportunities, obviously, for our residents to be able to find new opportunities and jobs that may come from new businesses coming into this area. It certainly has been a successful venture. We also, at the time of the creation of the Regional Economic Development Corporation, created a, a long-term economic development strategy that actually is being worked on now. You know, in terms of updates and focus. And again, it's a collaborative effort of the region, the, the cities, the townships, and Waterloo Economic Development Corporation, all rolling in the same direction, trying to further economic development opportunities for this region. So it's prosperous, it's growing, it's thriving. This is a renewal for us, and, and the rest of the cities and the townships as well as the region. And as the report outlines, at this point in time, the major increases are being absorbed by the region and the three cities. Any increase to our, or impact on the budget would be ultimately in the years ahead, when we start to implement cost of living or inflationary increases. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that counsel may have on the report before the presentation from, from Tony.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel, for Mr. Brenneman? No, seeing none. Then we will ask Tony La Mancha and Lucinda Wallace to come forward and make the presentation, please.
Thank you, Chair Bryant. So it's, it's only me tonight, and like the gentleman who dealt with the drainage issue, I have a bit of a voice issue that I've been dealing with for the last two or three, so please bear with me. So let me start by saying that the, the most important rule in economic development, apart from trying to keep your anchor companies within the region, is what we call the importance of our anchor companies. And the best way to summarize that is a saying that goes something like this, never walk past an old friend to greet a new one. And so, you know, it's, it's always gratifying to see companies like Toyota and their supply chain partners in Elmira, like Toyota Bushuku, really, you know, bringing to life this notion that community brand and corporate brand, when it works well, sync. And, and that's, that's actually a beautiful thing. So I'm going to provide an update. It's not going to be fifteen minutes. And then I'd be pleased to take any questions. So whoever's driving, please go to the next slide, and thank you. So we were officially created in twenty fifteen. I'm the inaugural CEO. We have a private sector board of directors made up of local leaders, some of the Woolwich residents like Arnold Drung have been, has, he was the past chair, also on the HR committee, very active. So we're the first point of contact for companies wanting to locate, relocate, or expand in the region. We provide a range of services at no cost, and then work with a number of partners in the legal, accounting, and real estate space, commercial real estate space, to help drive new investment into the community. Next slide, please. Our funding partners, in addition to the three cities, the four townships in the region, include the Government of Canada and the Government of Ontario. The next slide. So, how many economic development organizations does it take to screw in a lightbulb? I mean, that's, that's a question that I, that I often get. And so, you know, the townships have limited, not a lot of economic development or investment promotion capacity. I know Derek Hughes is acting for, has been in the role for the last couple of months for the Township of Woolwich. But essentially, the collaboration blueprint we've built is a, is a who does what. So we are the lead on investment promotion for the entire region. We lead outbound business missions and host a number of incoming missions. We support tourism, talent attraction. On the talent side, the most important piece is to find a local leader for a new company coming into the region. That matters because if we get someone from the community, chances are they'll better be able to help with hiring and better be able to have an impact very quickly. We also support some broad regional efforts on things like shovel-ready sites, and work with the federal government and provincial government on applications for local companies. So I spend quite a bit of time writing letters of support for Woolwich Township companies and other companies that want to access the Southwestern Ontario Development Fund or the Strategic Innovation Funds. That's essentially one of the things that we're able to do, and, and it's a way to ensure that, you know, the three cities, four townships, and the region all move with a single voice when it comes to supporting local expansion. Next slide, please. So since inception, we've had eighty-seven closed investments with an investment value of about one point six billion dollars. Over forty-seven hundred new jobs created. Interestingly, forty-one were local expansions, forty-six new foreign direct investment coming into the region. And, and you can see the breakdown based on cities and townships. The townships in total represent about twelve percent of that in terms of the, the value of the investment. So it's actually, across the board, it's been a, quite a success. Next slide, please. So a couple of metrics here, in terms of leverage and return on investment. So for every dollar of municipal funding, the corporation has delivered a hundred and twelve dollars of business investment. And overall, that number, including federal and provincial funding, is seventy-two dollars. With some of the multipliers, you know, the forty-six hundred direct jobs created have had supply chain impacts that lead to about approximately ten thousand new jobs created since twenty sixteen. And, you know, when we got the two million dollar base funding in twenty fifteen, we recognized that to really drive growth, we would need federal and provincial support. So we were able to access program funding as well. Next slide, please. So as of September of this year, we've closed nine deals valued at about a hundred and twelve, hundred and thirteen million dollars. The dashboard, the pipeline's very healthy with about one point five billion in opportunities that are qualified, because they actually have a, a project, a timeline, and a budget. So we go through a, a traditional strategic selling process where we triage all of the opportunities. We're not wasting a lot of time on tire kickers or companies that we don't want in the region. It, it is, you have to be discerning. We're, we don't work with Chinese state-owned firms. We've never had, we never have. We tend to work with countries that have, that come from democratic countries and understand the importance of, of, of those shared values, because that is more likely to be a good outcome for both the community and for the investor. Next slide, please. So in terms of Woolwich, a good example of this, this idea of, you know, trying to keep the companies in the community is here on Digital Pathology. They were a City of Waterloo company for up until twenty seventeen, towards the, the end of twenty seventeen. And with some support from us and some provincial funding, they, they landed in Woolwich Township. And have been a great growth story. Their technology is used to essentially de-risk and, and accelerate diagnostics for, you know, tumors and a range of other, you know, issues in terms of the healthcare system. So great to have that company and their technology, and intellectual property is, is world-class. And I'll just briefly mention Conestoga Meats simply because there's probably nothing more strategic than food, and, and having, you know, that kind of protein production in this township with its great global brand and its exports to Japan and to China is a testimony of, you know, kind of the iron rule, the golden rule of economic development, which is support your anchor companies. Next slide, please. So we spent a lot of time of in, on inbound marketing. We, when we do that, we support a range of initiatives. So pillar campaigns, direct marketing, and broad investment marketing focused on the entire region's brand or the Waterloo brand. And the, the goal is to get them here. Once we actually have them here, then we have to better understand the specs of what they're looking for. It's, if it's a industrial site, then obviously we'll, we'll look to see what we have in the region. Next slide, please. So we've started doing podcasts recently on things like, on key issues like, how do we find a local leader to build out our team? How do we help with social justice initiatives in the community? So we're starting to encourage new investors in the region to get very active with philanthropy and doing it right away. So companies like EPAM Systems that recently landed in Kitchener have been very active supporting Ukrainian refugees from, from Europe who've actually come into the region. And there's a range of things like that that we're doing to model some of the anchor companies we have, like Toyota. You know, as a company, I believe they've contributed something like fifteen million dollars to United Way over the last twenty years. So very significant local support. We just, at the front end, when we're marketing the region, the proposition is, you know, you're going to grow your company here. Hopefully, you'll have customers here, and this will be part of your brand. Why not give back to the community right away, right? And, and believe it or not, most companies welcome that, and they start to, to that dialogue, and we kind of introduce them to local stakeholders. Next slide. So, David spoke about the strategic plan. While the region's working on one, we essentially completed ours. I have seven hard copies here. It's also available on the website, and I'll, I'll leave it with, with the clerk, Jeff, and you can do, you know, what, what you will with it, with the copies. But the, the main pillars are building on the diversified economy and continuing to focus the striving for excellence. Trying to land a major manufacturing investment, a large transformative one. Continuing to promote our community's unique value proposition, strengthen emerging business clusters, and as I, I mentioned previously, showing leadership on social justice and equity, specifically as it relates to all the townships. We have to up our game as far as investment readiness in our rural and peri-urban environments. And, you know, that is really about determining, you know, what is, what does the community want, you know? So for instance, does the township of North Humphreys want to be aggregates and gravel pits as kind of their core for the next five or ten years? And if that's, if that's not the case, then what, what does the future look like? And that's a very important conversation. Because there's an underlying tension between growth and, and keeping the things that make, for instance, Woolwich Township, you know, such a special place. Next slide. So in terms of reavanting the future, you know, we're going to continue to do, you know, the, the, the work we do to lead on requests for information in our peace for Waterloo region, support municipal partners and business expansion and retention. But I think in terms of opportunities, we have an urgent focus on mega-site development, focusing our, most of our efforts on small to mid-sized industrial expansion. You know, Waterloo region has the lowest industrial vacancy rate, not only in the country, but in North America. So we now have the lowest industrial vacancy rate. So that, you know, if you are involved in economic development in this region, or a member of, of the regional government, you want to start looking at employment lens. And, you know, what, what do the next five or ten years look like? In addition to some of the housing challenges we have. We want to attract full headquarters, relocations, not just R and D hubs. And a streamlined team approach to our top anchor companies, specifically, you know, listing the top ten companies, for instance, in Woolwich Township, and calling on them once a quarter, just to get a sense of are they at risk? Are they having any challenges in terms of their markets? These are all things that are really important to ensuring that our anchor companies continue to grow. And as I mentioned, we're going to be more active, engaging in local corporate and social justice action. Next slide. Please, thanks. It's a very different world than, you know, twenty sixteen for sure, globally. Supply chain regionalization. We had delegation in from Baden-Burtonburg, Germany today. They, they just left the university. I think it's fair to say that around the world, I talked to Um, I think it's fair to say that around the world, I talked about democracies, but increasingly. We're gonna do more business with countries that we like and trust that have shared values and and less with those that we don't. And and that is something that we have to stay focused on. And whether you call it friend shoring or supply chain reshoring, certainly something that we're we're going to, you know, place a real priority on. Quality of life, um, inflation, cost of living challenges. The way we try to address that is let's make sure that we land great companies that move up the value chain so we can increase the median incomes. Of folks that live in uh, our region. Um, commercial space utilization, obviously post COVID, that's been a challenge, uh, you know, the uh. The the vacancy rate uh, on the other side of the coin in our commercial spaces. Is something that really hasn't recovered because of hybrid work situations. And so we're increasingly talking to corporate real estate executives. On uh, trying to fill up uh, space and this is true of both um, you know, downtown Kitchener and downtown Waterloo. Um, and then obviously an inventory of shovel ready sites, really important. Uh, we all have signature sites we wanna promote and uh, and so we want the world to know. You know, what are the industrial sites or the shovel ready sites that we have in the townships and the region? Next slide. So um, from the bottom of my heart, thanks for the ongoing support. Um, we have a team of thirteen professionals. Lucinda, who's a Woolwich resident, is actually. In um, Germany right now with a federal delegation with Erin. And she's coming back next week, but definitely sends her regards and I'm gonna zip it and open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont. Does council have any questions for the delegate? Mayor Schatz?
Yeah, no, really, a question. Thank you for coming in, Tony, and um, I really appreciate uh. A a little bit of a, a, not a pivot, but um, taking on the local um, retention. Piece because I know when, when it was first started, it was starting as foreign direct investment. So um, I I really appreciate that balance. Of of bringing new companies in, but also supporting our existing companies.
Yeah, thank you.
I guess, but if I had a question, it and and you sort of addressed it here, but in for the township for us. Um, what's the biggest roadblock?
Uh, I, you know, i- it's the biggest roadblock is that you've got some companies that are doing really well. And they don't have room to grow. Okay, and I'm just gonna put it in very simple terms. One or two of the really important anchors. We're gonna figure it out for them, the region and the township. But there are so many, you know, I can, I can list. And this is not just a Woolwich Township issue. It's an issue across the region. So. And it's because our industrial vacancy rate is really low. You know, and it's, it's, it's a, you know, first world problem, nice problem to have because the economy has been really strong. But uh, we wanna keep them here, right? You know, and that's, that's the goal. If we can keep them within Waterloo region, within the township. You know, it it's gonna require a a keen eye on employment uh, lands and industrial uh, lands as well.
So, so just to follow up to that, then what size lands are we missing? I I mean, I know, I know we're really short on land, period, but is there something specific we should?
Uh, I would say a- all sizes. You want the flexibility to be able to uh, allow a a company to either. Expand or grow in modules. So, uh, and any other challenges that um, the owners of. Industrial sites wanna lease and a lot of our clients don't, you know, they they basically wanna own, right? And that's. It's an issue in southwest Ontario. Um, and we have become, uh, we were never low cost. But we're, you know, we're, we're getting up there as far as expensive, especially for serviced land and and so, uh, but I, what I tell. Investors is uh, you've gotta pay for peace of mind and you're gonna get what you, what you pay for. There's a reason why. Values have gone up uh, for industrial land and for residential because it's, it's just a great place to to live and work.
Thank you. Any other questions, Council Schwinn?
Thanks. I'm not sure this is for David or you, Tony. I'm curious on how our local business development officers work with your team. Um, maybe not these mega projects, more in the local level. Are we getting synergies and it's working together on that?
Uh, can I give it a shot? So um, absolutely. So we've been working with um. Woolwich Economic Development for, well, since the onset and uh, you're the only township that has an economic development role, right? Um, so before Jenna, the Economic Development Officer. Uh, and and currently with Derek, we developed an anchor company call program. So, you know, you you take your top ten or twenty companies in the township. Be a TriMac, be a, you know, Conestoga Meats or others, you know, here on Digital Pathology. And uh, meet with them regularly to um. You know, essentially assess uh, any retention challenges and um. You know, and during the pandemic, there were a number of companies that. You know, were having some challenges for uh, reasons related to their customer base. So, uh, and for a while, I think it might have been um. Uh, during a pregnancy leave or when you had a big, you had an uh, a period where there was nobody in the role. We actually did the economic development support for for the township. So. Um, it is um, one of the things about the entire region is that there's. Other than the three cities uh, that have, you know, kind of modest economic development teams of five or six people, uh, there aren't a lot of. You know, dedicated resources to go out and do the corporate calls. Those calls are really important, um. You know, I spent half of my career in the private sector, but when it, when I was hired by the province. To lead the investment industry uh, division in twenty, two thousand and nine uh, during the automotive restructuring, global financial crisis. Uh, townships that um, now Woolwich isn't, I was gonna, I'm gonna talk about Leamington. But there's an example of of a of a township that had one company, Heinz. As its anchor employer and that one company represented ninety percent of the municipal tax base. And they didn't have a corporate call program. Um, never really thought about improvements to plant and equipment, right? You know, if if you're not getting more uh, productive. You're going the other way. And and eventually when uh, Heinz shuttered the plant, um. I I was involved in a six month project to basically find a new buyer and we did an employee, sort of employee buyout with some foreign money, but. You never wanna be in that situation, right? You always want, want to ensure that your, your, your strong companies have to be kept that way and and uh. And if there are any issues in terms of their global ownership, now the good, the good news is that most of your anchors are actually not, you know, foreign owned. And that's, that's also a great thing. So um, that's essentially how we work together. Um, you know, we'll support some uh, tourism initiatives. Uh, we support some uh, investor calls and uh, you know, and the goal is to to land a couple of. Uh, new anchor companies, they'll be a good fit for the township. And that's, that's kind of, to me, that's the prize to to get some new. Uh, companies into the, into the township that um, are a nice fit.
Yeah, that, uh, through you, Madam Chair, um. The one example I'd like to use where, you know, I can see we leverage off the resources and expertise and the opportunities that that exist. Is um, Tony mentioned Conestoga Meats, which Conestoga Meats has gone through a series of expansions. And and certainly over time, um, there's been a role for our economic development to talk to the Ministry of Economic Development, et cetera. And and work on supports and and programs, et cetera. Um, but we really, you know, we really benefit uh, in this region as well because, you know, Tony hasn't mentioned, but he used to work at Queens Park. Um, he has, you know, um, knowledge and and people and connections that he can, can leverage. And at times, that's where we also work together is Conestoga Meats is looking to expand. They're looking for funding opportunities. You know, there's connections that our staff have. There's connections that Tony and his team have. And it's how we work together and collaborate, the same way uh, as Tony mentioned. You know, um, you recall that um, uh, Jenna um, was working on a COVID recovery business retention. And expansion program. Any of the, any of the information that comes out of that, that would be a benefit to. Um, Tony and his team, we share that information on a regular basis. We have regular touch point meetings with staff. On a regularly quarterly basis, both as a township and as townships together. So we're also trying to leverage the rural aspect. Uh, and leverage off each other to work with Tony and his team again to promote. Um, you know, the opportunities that exist and work together collectively for the betterment of the region.
Yeah, and actually, if I could correct that, we we actually do have specific township meetings once a quarter, but we meet once a month. Yeah, with all the economic, we meet every month with the economic development teams across the region and um. So everybody's fully up to speed and if there are mutual challenges that uh, we have to address, we uh, you know, we get, we get to work. So.
Any other questions, Council for the delegate? Seeing none? Thank you, Tony.
You're welcome.
Do we have any questions for staff, Council? None? Before you, you have a resolution. Uh, do I have a mover for that resolution? It's basically considering report A zero eight twenty twenty-three respecting the Waterloo Economic Development Corporation. Mover? Do I have a second or? Counselor Burgess, all in favor? That would be carried. Okay, then we move on to IS twenty-two dash twenty twenty-three George Street, High Street and Charles Street Reconstruction Project. First, we will hear from the engineering project supervisor, Ian Vaughn, and then we will invite the delegates, Dr. Dan Holt and David Seller to speak. So we'll start with uh, Ian Vaughn.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Brian in Woolwich Council. This evening, Infrastructure Services is here to present a report IS twenty-two. Dash twenty twenty-three to seek Council's endorsement of the preferred cross section for George Street, High Street and Charles Street Reconstruction Project. The proposed cross section for endorsement is presented in the report as appendix D for Council's review. As mentioned in the report, staff undertook an in-person public consultation center September thirteenth, which was well attended by the community. All feedback received from area residents was compiled into a comment log and reviewed by staff. In summary, there were three main concerns the community raised. Residents were opposed to the implementation of sidewalk along George High Charles. There was some support for sidewalk along George Street from Church Street East to Bolander Parking Lot. Residents raised concerns regarding the narrowing of roadways and preferred their roads, uh, stay at their current width. And residents raised concerns over parking restrictions proposed that would limit parking to one side of the roadway. Most prefer to not implement any parking restrictions. In keeping with the Accessibility for Ontarians with Disabilities Act, AODA, staff. Review construction projects and assess the feasibility of introducing sidewalks where none uh, currently exist. For this reconstruction, it was determined early on during the preliminary design process that sidewalk on both sides of the roadway within the constrained fifteen point two meter. Uh, wide road allowance was not feasible. Staff but then looked at the most appropriate location to have sidewalk installed along one side of the subject roadways. It was determined that a new one point eight meter sidewalk could be installed along one side of the subject roadway. With little impact to the boulevard area and this would meet the intent of the AODA. The feedback from residents provide insight into the parking challenges the community uh, experiences during peak summer activities around the Bolander Park splash pad. As the parking lot often exceeds capacity and overflow parking utilizes the surrounding roadways. Staff have removed the zero point six meter boulevard from the cross section that was proposed at the Public Consultation Center. And have widened the roadway to allow parking on the majority of the roadway while allowing the travel lane between the two parked vehicles. In addition to the report and through further staff discussions, staff would propose to restrict parking on the east side of George Street between Church Street East. And Charles Street to allow two-way traffic while vehicles are parked on the west side of George Street. Historically, staff would complete the preliminary design, uh, present the preliminary design at Public Consultation Center. Address any concerns the community may have and proceed to tendering the project for construction. Due to the controversial sidewalk implementation and cross section design from the community. Staff believe it'd be beneficial to have council endorse the preferred cross section before finalizing detailed design. The reconstruction of George High and Charles is currently forecasted to occur in twenty twenty-four pending council approval. With that, Infrastructure Services would be happy to answer any questions Council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Any questions from Council? Counselor Caddo?
Thank you, Chair through you to staff. Excuse me. Um, if we went ahead with no sidewalks on this stretch, we would not be AODA compliant. Is that my understanding?
Through Chair Brian to Counselor Caddo, if that is correct.
Counselor Burgess, you had a question?
Yeah, through you, Chair Bryant, um. Is there anything in the works or future ideas for other parking for Bolander Park or increased parking?
Uh, few Chair Bryant to Counselor Burgess, uh, any, any parking that would be uh, attributed to Bowler would be outside of this project. Um, this project was driven uh, by water man installation uh, to facilitate what we call the industrial uh, northeast lands. Um, so that was really the driver, uh, the road condition obviously has uh, has exasperated and uh, is is pretty abysmal as well. So. Um, certainly something that can be explored at a later date, um, as well as trail connectivity. So I think. Uh, another piece for uh, for information would be the um, the thirty-nine Arthur Street developments. Uh, and why uh, we're not talking about connectivity between the Kissing Bridge Trail currently and this community is because there haven't been lands. Uh, dedicated yet to the township, but that is something that is to occur in the future. And at that time, I think is, it would be a more appropriate time to look at. Um, potential Bolander Park uh, parking expansion.
Any other questions, Council? Seeing none? Sorry, Council.
I'm slow on this one, but but. Counselor Caddo's question tweaked me a little bit, um, saying we wouldn't be AOD compliant. Is that the black and white situation or are we looking at a situation where AOD is supposed to? Have the township provide, I guess, similar type accessibility for all and. If we can say the road is similar to the sidewalk in terms of maintenance and accessibility. Why wouldn't we be compliant? Is there no room? Intuitively, there's gotta be some gray areas there.
So through you, uh, Chair Bryant to Counselor Schwinn's question, I think. Um, AODA does not say thou shalt install, install sidewalk. I think the intent of accessibility in Ontario is to assess the viability of the installation of of breaking down barriers for those who are challenged. Uh, in that area. So in that regard, um, why uh, sidewalk becomes paramount where there is no sidewalk is. The the curb in of itself protects a pedestrian from the traveling public. So staff would not view uh, a roadway as an appropriate pedestrian facility. Um, and that's why we look to install sidewalk where feasible. AODA also says you don't have to spend countless dollars and um, uh, and and tons of infrastructure just to facilitate a sidewalk. But I think where where we struggle is the challenge in this instance is staff looked at this always from two sidewalks and new development sidewalks, both sides doesn't matter. Um, there is no uh, debate about that from from our development standards. When we go into a built up section, that is not always simple. Um, sometimes it is incredibly costly uh, to install sidewalk and as long as it's been assessed and determined. Um, that whether this was feasible or not, I think that is the importance. And in this instance. Two sidewalk, both sides is not appropriate. Sidewalk one side is very appropriate. We have a constrained corridor in fifteen point two three meters. Typically, we have twenty meter wide road allowances as well. So we are constrained in that corridor. Mill Street has a twelve point two meter wide corridor. We have sidewalk both sides there. So again, that is a linear piece of road. We don't have the same great challenges that we would, that present themselves in George, Charles and High. So uh, we did look at sidewalk one side. I think that is the intent. Of the legislation you must review. Um, that is staff's professional opinion that we don't believe to be appropriate to have um. Uh, those people in with mobility challenges, uh, saying wheelchair, they're lower to the ground to be uh, commuting around on the roadway. Uh, sidewalk far more appropriate for pedestrian use uh, when dealing with trouble, albeit in a uh, you know, a quite a um. A quite close knit community. I appreciate that as well. Um, it's not like you have cut through traffic occurring in this area, but. That is the intent in our professional opinion um, to uh, to utilize um, or to 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 assess the AODA.
Any other questions, Council? Seeing none? Next, we have Dr. Dan Holt. Thank you for joining us. Please go ahead when you're ready, Dan.
Madam Chair, counselors and those attending. First, let me say that uh, I understand and appreciate the need for accessibility. Years ago, I was the executive director of the Arthritis Foundation. We had a loan locker. From which we loaned wheelchairs, crutches, walkers. We also had a crew of two veterans who would go to homes. And at the owner's request, install grab bars in the bathrooms and build ramps to make the home accessible. In addition, I was on the Mayor's Committee for Employment of the Handicap and served as Chair of the Accessibility Committee in a city of over one million in population. So I am familiar with accessibility and do support it. But sidewalks on the circle of Charles and High Street will not enhance the accessibility of the neighborhood. In fact, it will make life more difficult for the residents. Currently, the street is wide. And if we could have the photo of the two cars, yeah, thank you. As you can see, about nine point one meters or thirty feet is the width of the, the street. And there are curb cuts at every driveway. Sidewalks would narrow the street with curb cuts at every driveway. How would that make it any better? It would make the road more narrow and you'd still have curb cuts at the same place. People who have lived in the neighborhood for fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty years enjoy the wide streets. As you can see in this photo, a car is about the width of a sidewalk and narrowing the street that much would not leave room for parking, eliminating parking on one side of the street. I've even heard there's a possibility of narrowing the street, the width of a sidewalk without putting in a sidewalk. Now that's just definitely not a solution. There are forty one homes on Charles, George and High Streets, and I've collected fifty one signatures on a petition calling for no sidewalks. Every signature is by a person who lives on Charles, High or George Street. The next photo. These two photos being shown now were taken on October the fourth and the next one will be on the thirteenth from my front yard. And you can see that these trucks were barely able to make the corner turns with the current lack of sidewalks. Just imagine the problem with narrower streets due to sidewalks. There was another large truck at the end of September, but I didn't get a photo. And one day there were three large trucks going around the circle. Yeah, obviously. They made a mistake and turned in the wrong place. But they still had to navigate back to Church Street to get to their destination. And as you can see, the truck with, it looks like telephone poles barely made it around that corner. In summary, there were forty one homes on Charles High and George Streets. The petition I've turned in was and is signed by fifty one residents all against the sidewalks. There's another photo next slide. There you go. That was taken in my front yard. That's a large tanker truck going down Spruce Lane, which came in from the corner of Charles and High Street. Again, very difficult to navigate and almost impossible if there were sidewalks. It will not increase accessibility to put sidewalks in. There are already curb cuts at every driveway. In essence, there would be no additional accessibility. Number two, sidewalks will narrow the streets dramatically. A sidewalk on one side will reduce the width of the street by about one point eight meters or about six feet or the width of a car. If another car is parked on the street, that will reduce the width of the street approximately a total of three point six meters or about twelve feet. In all likelihood, that would mean no parking on the streets at all. In addition, it would definitely make it difficult for school buses, trash trucks, fire trucks, septic tank trucks and large trailers to navigate. Additionally, in the winter, snow and snow plowing would narrow the street even more. Three, the neighborhood is a closed circle with only one entrance, one exit street, and that being George. It is not a thoroughfare, hence the traffic flow is slow and limited. A sidewalk on the park side west of George, which has already been discussed from Church Street to the park parking lot would facilitate walking from the, from church to the park. But it really narrows the corner turn off of Char, from church to George Street. If you've been there recently, you can see that it has really narrowed it. They put in the curb already on the corner. Number four, people who live on the circle chose to buy there because it is a quiet, very low traffic neighborhood. Fifty one people, property owners have expressly said, no, we don't want sidewalks. Don't we have any say in the matter? Number five, let's save a hundred and ten thousand dollars and not put in sidewalks. They're not wanted and they're not going to solve the problem. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Dan. Any questions from council? Counselor Burgess?
Through you, Chair Bryant to the delegate. Yeah, Dr. Dan, thanks for coming out and delegating and thanks everyone that showed up to the PCC meeting. It's great to hear the residents' opinion. You know what you guys want. My question for you is after the PCC, staff came back and made amendments and changed things and looked at widening the road another one point three meters, I think, from their original plan. What do you think of the new presentation they presented today with that wider? I think they're only down point five from the original average. Do you have any comments on that or do you have any compromise? I guess is my question.
I, I'm not sure I understand. Are you talking about putting in a sidewalk?
Yes.
But just a narrow sidewalk?
Yeah. So I think the new report they're bringing, they're originally going to narrow the street to six point seven. You can correct me if I'm wrong here.
So just for clarification through Chair Bryant to Counselor Burgess, we would be, the revised changes were to basically eliminate the point six meter boulevard and put that into the road. So currently it's an eight point four meter roadway edge of pavement, edge of pavement where the concrete curb meets the asphalt and we would look to revise that to a seven point three meter edge of pavement, edge of pavement. So reduction one point one meters from existing to proposed.
What? Is that about? I'm sorry, I'm not really up on meters. Is that about five feet or?
So one point one years would just be just under four.
Four feet?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so then what you're proposing is to reduce the width of the lane by four feet to put in a four foot sidewalk?
Through Chair Bryant to the delegation. What we would be, we would be looking to reduce the road width by one point one meters to implement the one point eight meter sidewalk, which we would need an additional point seven meters outside of the existing roadway. So additional, just over two feet that we would be basically taking additionally taking additionally from the current back of sidewalk or back of curb locations.
But I think in some, in summary though, I think the, the key message was when we presented to the public meeting, there was restricted parking, narrower road, boulevard with a one point eight meter sidewalk. So what I think we heard loud and clear at the PCC that was important to us that we were not aware of was the impacts from Bolander Park, namely during the summer months. I think that was a significant impact where you had overflow parking occurring on the surrounding streets. I don't think we were aware of that. So what we did do is what we were able is, is reduce, remove that boulevard. So now we have curb face sidewalk, which is not fantastic for us from a maintenance perspective, but it's something that we were trying to balance. We are not going to restrict parking. Parking will now be allowed on both sides as current is today, and that will also permit one travel lane. So you have, you are able to get through, you are allowed to park both sides. And in a closed community like that without no cut through traffic, we see that as, is, is really not a significant change. The piece that I think we've come to realize as well on George is we have to limit parking on George because you can't have people holding up Church Street. So if somebody's coming from Bolander Park, say, to church, we can't be having somebody on church trying to turn into Bolander Park waiting. So we've recognized that we must limit at least parking one side of the road between Church Street to, we'll call it Charles for now, yet to be defined, but in and around that area. So we think that is a, a good balance and, and I think that was an important piece of the public engagement and sort of seeing that in action. We had one thought, we presented it, the public says, hold on, it's not quite that way. Here's what we'd like to do. So I think we've been able to try to strike that balance. But as far as sidewalk goes, I guess that's the piece that staff are, are focused on from an accessibility perspective.
Okay, so what I understand and, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're talking about one car being able to go down the, the street if there's parking on both sides. So in other words, it'd be one way. And if there's another car coming, they'd have to pull over somewhere until that car passes.
Correct.
I don't know that I can speak for the entire neighborhood, but I would say no, that's not really that accessible or that agreeable, especially when, as I said, when you put in the sidewalks, you put in curb cuts at every driveway. So what's the advantage of putting in the sidewalk? You've already got curb cuts at every driveway.
If, if maybe I can speak to that through you, Chair, to the delegation. One of the things that I've been monitoring is the AODA piece on this, and that's the one thing that I'm hinging this on. And I respect your position that it may not be necessary for this location. But I'm of the opinion if one of these forty one houses go up for sale, it could preclude somebody with mobility issues from putting an offer on this, from moving into this community because of those mobility issues. So not going forward with legislation is problematic for me. And that's kind of where I'm struggling with this. So I don't know if you can speak to that.
Yeah, I, I, through you, Madam Chair, I appreciate what you're saying. But I guess what I'm feeling is that for a maybe future potential, somebody saying, hey, we want to move into that neighborhood. We see it. We know what it's, what's there. We understand that, but we still want to move there. You're saying go against all of the people who've lived there for years and years and don't want to change it. So anybody that might be coming in would, would still be able to see it the way it is and either say, yes, I want it or no, I don't want it. So I'm, I'm just not sure where somebody in the future takes precedent over the people who have, have lived there for a number of years and, and said, no.
Because the AODA is pushing us to make it barrier free by twenty twenty five. This is going to find the face of that, you know?
So the property owners don't have any say?
It's not what I'm suggesting at all. Through you, Chair, what I'm suggesting is we have an opportunity to restructure this road and we have an opportunity to bring it into AODA compliance. I think that we as a township have the responsibility to push to bring it into compliance as much as we can, respecting the position that the residents take. But to your point, Dan, you know, my father had mobility issues. He was bound to the wheelchair in his last days. He wouldn't have been able to live in a place like that. If I lived in this place, maybe nobody in my family would have needed the sidewalk, but it would have precluded my father to come and live with me for that reason alone. He wouldn't have been able to travel outside of the house. So there are some very real concerns here that I think that we need to address before we move forward with no sidewalks.
I appreciate what you're saying, and especially about your father. I guess what I'm saying is that it is accessible now. The streets are wide enough. In fact, I've been there over fifteen years and I've actually never seen anyone in a wheelchair during that time, but I understand, I understand.
Or people who are utilizing wheelchair. So that's what AODA is really after. It's mobility rates for all. It's
I understand that. Like I said, I was in charge of accessibility for a, a city with over a million population. I'm very fully aware.
Okay, I'm going to interrupt this because we're causing a debate here and this is not about debating. So we're going to have to stop.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, Dr. Dan, but we can't debate. Any other questions for Dr. Dan? None? Okay, thank you, Dr. Dan. We're going to move on to the next person, which is Dave Sellers. Thank you. Please come up, Mr. Seller.
I just want to thank the committee for allowing me this opportunity to speak today on this matter.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. My name is Dave Seller. I'm a resident on Charles Street. My wife and I have a property there and we are the property owners of that property. Couple of things I'd like to just discuss. I, I looked at this at a bit of a different lens. I realized that the subdivision is, is a unique subdivision. It sort of acts almost like a cul-de-sac, but it's in the, in the shape of a P lot, sort of. And I just did some rough, rough, rough research here when I was just looking at something that's, as some existing cul-de-sacs within the sub, within, within different subdivisions, like Purple Martin Court, for instance, Sandpiper Court and Sunset Place. Each of them have right away widths of twenty meters and there's absolutely no sidewalks on those roads. And I was just curious if those roadways are going to fall into the AODA compliance for the twenty twenty five that has been mentioned already. I know this, I, I'll get back to the, our road as well, but that just tweaks something in my mind when I heard that I could, because there are other unique locations that don't have sidewalk like ours. And I'm just curious about how that, how that's going to be addressed.
Mr. Coupee?
Absolutely. Through you, Chair Bryant, to the delegate. Yes, that is a fact that we would review that for the installation of sidewalk. And again, that would be a council decision as the way it's arrived now. We do not have a sidewalk policy. But that is something that may happen over the course of time, but we would be absolutely looking at it from that perspective. And I just on that piece, I can, I can, I want to clarify something. Just because the township does work and, and those instances, what Mr. Seller brings forward are, are paving programs that I'm aware of when I was here since twenty twelve, we did some maintenance paving activity. What we would deem that to be is not a full reconstruction. I think that's one thing I want to clarify just for information purposes. When we have an opportunity for a full recon, we're a reconstruction project where we're replacing granular curb and gutter, that is the time that we assess that. If we are going to do a resurfacing, not necessarily the time because the cost of doing sidewalk in the absence of a full reconstruction is cost prohibitive. It has happened. We do do expansions, but it is three to four times the cost of installing sidewalk under a full recon. I just wanted to explain that piece too. I think that's an important aspect.
Okay, thank you for that. A couple of things I'd like to talk about. The traffic volumes on the road is sort of mentioned already, which are low because there's forty houses that are there or forty houses. Vehicle speeds are low and I'm not aware of any, this is anecdotally on my part, but I'm not aware of any collisions that have happened between pedestrians and vehicles in my time that we've, we've lived there eleven years. So anecdotally, I don't believe that there has been. And I, I didn't realize that the, that it was mentioned that we do not have a sidewalk policy in place. I feel that the reason we're having this conversation today is only because of the, the construction that's going on the road. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here standing today to, to, to speak to this. I think there's definitely a, a correlation between a narrow road width, which is a form of traffic calming and the amount of vehicle traffic and the speeds on there. And as we know already, there's a lot, there's not a lot of vehicle traffic. It's isolated to this neighborhood and the vehicle speeds are low as well. I myself walk on the road. I use it regularly and the people that live in the neighborhood understand that it is a low volume and speeds aren't an issue and it hasn't been an issue since we've lived there. And we've taken our son to the Bolander Park when he was younger and we would walk on the road with him. Now, so I, I don't believe that the sidewalk and road narrowings are necessary. I am not opposed to the sidewalk being installed from church, from church on the, on the park side to the, to the access to Bolander Park. I think that makes sense to provide that connectivity. I guess in closing, I just want to say that I, I feel that the, the, the wages, or sorry, the money being spent on this project could be, I proposed, propose that it could be spent better elsewhere. For instance, we're talking about sidewalk installation. If we go on Park Street between Duke and Union, there's a section of sidewalk that's not installed that has a sidewalk on one side, but you have this piece that's missing. To me, that would make more sense to spend the money there and put a sidewalk in there where it's actually needed versus in our, in our area where we are. I just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Seller. Does council have any questions for this delegate? No, seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you all for taking the time to speak to council today. Counsel, do you have any further questions for staff? Counselor Grant?
Thank you. I'm just wondering, as Mr. Coupee was saying, that when we're doing a paving program, that's not the time to be doing a sidewalk. Instead, it's more when we're doing a larger reconstruction of the road. Could you give us a sense that if we weren't to put a sidewalk in during this larger reconstruction, when we could expect that to come down in the future that we might be looking at a project, whether it's twenty, thirty years from now that we're reconstructing that road and putting in a sidewalk then? Just, I'm just wondering if, if we don't do it now, when will it, when could we see that happening?
Yeah, through you, Chair Bryant to Counselor Grant. So just so I'm clear on the question, if sidewalk were not to be endorsed tonight, we were to proceed without sidewalk, when would we see coming forward? I think why we are assessing it now is because we appreciate that the life cycle of a reconstruction is around seventy five years. And it would be incredibly low on the priority scale for needs as raised. Lots of priorities throughout the township for connectivity with respect to sidewalk. The reason again that it is before us is Uh, the reason again that it is before us is because we have what we would deem to be a bit of a clean slate and the ability to install that. Um, and the benefit in this case, unlike most cases, is uh where the back of curb generally exists now is roughly where the back of sidewalk would be installed. That is very unusual. I think that's important to note as well. Um, typically, that sidewalk eats up the entire Grass Boulevard area on locations where sidewalk doesn't exist. So again, there's some uniquenesses in this instance, but yes, you would not uh expect to have staff come back and and demand sidewalk at some point.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing none? Okay, you have a resolution before you that the Council of the Township of Woolwich considering report IS twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, respecting George Street, High Street, and Charles Street Reconstruction Project. Design Approval Report endures the preferred cross-section for George Street, High Street, and Charles Street in Omira. Do I have a mover for that report? Sorry?
I think before I I can't move this recommendation as quite, I think we should have some discussion as council. Um, I have a few comments.
Sure.
Because, yeah, the AODA Act, for sure, we've got to take that into consideration. That's pretty important. But to me, this is a judgment call on how do we meet the intent of the AODA Act in a responsible manner that appreciatively makes a difference or prevents inequity for people. Um. In this case, we've got quiet street, very few vehicles going up and down it. I consider that roadway to be accessible for wheelchairs or other means of transportation. I wouldn't consider Oriole Parkway, for example, to have those same features. Game's not on. So we we as council need to take these local considerations into effect. So for that money, how can we best improve accessibility in the township? I think we heard one other example. It's probably higher priority to me that makes sense. And I bet in the next twelve months, we're gonna hear ten other opportunities. So let's prioritize. It's not a perfect world. If it was, yeah, I'm all for the sidewalk. But to me, it's not the best use of resources, with the exception of that stretch from Bolander Park to Church Street. To me, that's a logical continuation.
Okay, so what are you proposing?
I would like to recommend staff come back with a new proposal that does not include sidewalks on George and High Street.
Okay, Council, uh, what do you want to do with this? Counsel Burgess?
I'm fine to move that.
Okay, so we we have a mover. We have a seconded. We have some discussion on this.
I'm gonna suggest that uh I would be happy to move the original recommendation. Um, however, given the fact that uh we have a motion on the floor now to move um uh another staff report. I would request that any additional staff report come with um all of the options that would be up for consideration at that time. So um the various options of no sidewalk, of the one sidewalk as well. Um, to have more fulsome discussion on what the options could be.
Do you want it broken down with costing with and without? Is that what you're looking for as well, pricing?
I'll defer to to staff to see whether or not that would be uh feasible and.
Thank you. Uh, through Chair Bryant, just for clarity, um, the intent here was to um uh seek direction, uh, we'll say from council regardless of what that is, if it's this motion or a new motion. Um, it it was not our intent to come back. We would just then proceed to detailed design with that recommendation from council. Um, I think that if if council wants to look at any alternative, we accept whatever council is going to decide this evening, and that would, we would just proceed in that. So if I if I understand correctly, the motion would be to install sidewalk on George Street only from Church Street uh to the Bolander Park area and then not have sidewalk on Charles or High or the remainder of George. If I'm if I'm reading, I just wanted to clarify the motion, so I think I'm we're understanding. Um, yeah, we that then if that is the motion that is to be carried, we would just proceed to detail design with that motion.
That's motion. That's what Counsel Burgess?
Just a little more clarification on that through you, Chair Bryant. Um, what does that entail for the rest of the street then on that crescent? Are we gonna keep the original width or is it still planning to be narrowed? Without the sidewalk?
Yeah, uh, through you, um, Chair Bryant, to Counsel Burgess regarding the road with. Um, we don't see any benefit to keeping the road the width that it is for the low volume that it is. We just don't see the benefit personally, but again, council's decision. Um, it 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 it's uh it's you're you're using asphalt roadway for for pedestrian use, I'm guessing, is is the intent. So um it just, again, we I guess we would seek council's direction on that, but it would not be staff's recommendation to do that. We wouldn't see the necessity to have a a wide road in the absence of a sidewalk or to replace a sidewalk. We don't see that that would uh something that we would uh we would support, but again, look for council's direction on that as well.
Council? Counsel Burgess?
Just for clarity on this again, sorry. If we move this tonight, this new direction, are we gonna vote on it in during the council meeting before Jared takes it back?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, yes. Uh, any decision you make tonight would be ratified at the council meeting uh next week.
Okay, no further questions, then I will call the vote. Sorry?
Sorry, Madam Chair, can I just get clarification?
Sure.
Um, on on what, sorry, just turning on my camera, on what the uh mover moved this evening. I think I heard that uh in considering the report, council direct staff to modify the design to remove sidewalks except on George Street between Church Street and the entrance to Bolander Park.
You make me sound so eloquent.
Okay.
Counsel, thank you. Um, I do have a question then in regards to that motion, which would be the staff is looking also for direction on the width of the road, which I think would also need to be included in that that motion.
That's fair. So I guess before I say anything there, I take the, as far as the feedback at the public meeting in terms of road width, if there was no sidewalk.
Uh, through Chair Bryant to Counsel Schwen, um, I would, I would say the residents would want status quo for the road width. So it's it's currently, it's currently eight point four edge of pavement to edge of pavement, so uh nine meters basically face of curb to face of curb is what's out there right now.
I saw some nuts in the gallery, so I think that was the feedback. That's what I'd be supporting.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we, I'm gonna call the vote. All in favor? It's two in favor, opposed. It's two opposed. Oh, I guess I get to be the tiebreaker here. I'm gonna go in favor. Counsel Schwen?
I know this will come up next week for for council conversations. One of your staff can be prepared to speak um and consult with members of our disability committees or Counselor Grant, I think you had a.
Grand River Accessibility Committee, get some feedback on from them.
Some professional feedback might be helpful.
Okay, well, then we're gonna move on. Consent items. We have one item for information. Before we pass a motion approving and receiving the consent agenda for information, does anyone on council wish to remove any items for further discussion? No, seeing none? Okay, so do we have a mover and a seconder for this?
Point of uh order. Should we bring Mayor Shon's back?
Oh, yes, please do. Sorry, Sandy, we forgot about you. It's okay, you're done for tonight, right? That's okay, no. So we'll go back to that one consent items. Do I have a mover and a seconder for this one? Counselor Grant, a seconder, Counselor Cado, all in favor? That would be carried. Okay. Let's see. Uh, where am I now? That the following consent items be received for information, though we've done that. Public notice, notice a public meeting. Everybody have a chance to look at this one? We did the public meeting? I'm sorry, I'm getting carried away here. Move on. Staff reports, let's go. We'll move on to Sustainability Climate Action Staff Request. Next, we have Director of Recreation and Community Services Anne MacArthur to provide an overview of her report, and then we'll hear from Delegate Tovey Davis, Tova Davidson. Anne, please present.
Great, thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So tonight, for your consideration, uh, as noted, this report R ten twenty twenty-three, which is requesting the approval of the hiring of full-time climate and sustainability coordinator and request that council approve the funding for that position to come out of the Climate Action and Greening Infrastructure Reserve. So just, you know, the premise of the report is really to kind of outline the work that has been done and what we continue to uh what we'll do in-house. So that's an area such as environmental stewardship. Um, you know, we've recognizing some of the work that our great committees do, and we and we saw some of that today with the recognition um of one of our local business groups. So we would continue to have work on trail development, connectivity, trail maintenance, trees and greening. And additionally, um, work will continue off the sides of the desk on actions that might include energy efficient facility upgrades, um, hybrid vehicles and transition off gas powered uh equipment to electric. And I want to highlight tonight, and I think it's really important, that although RCS is advocating for this position, it's important to clarify that it is not a position for RCS alone, but it's a pivotal one that will oversee corporate-wide policy and action, oversee and ensure the important environmental work is facilitated in all departments. So in the report, we talked about, um, you know, our partnership with Sustainable Waterloo, who's um provided lots of baseline data for us and provided support and resources, and Tova will speak um to the importance of that and the importance of this position. And then further to that highlight, just uh for for the viewing public, I guess, that in two thousand nineteen Township Council, along with seven other municipalities in the region, passed a recommendation to declare a climate emergency. And that provided um a direction for continued support for corporate and community climate action and work overtime towards improving our targets. So when this commitment was made to climate action in two thousand nineteen, there was no plan and no resources allocated with the education and expertise to really drive climate action and implement a plan that would move the needle and see significant GHD emission reductions and build sustainable operations. And then I'll note, uh, in June of twenty twenty-one, uh, Woolwich Township Council endorses Transform Waterloo Region Community Climate Action Strategy, which is a global community-wide response to the climate crisis. So this is really our action plan that's in place region-wide that outlines our long-term strategy to achieve uh an eighty-by-fifty local GHD reduction target, and that's based on some targets that we established in twenty-ten. Um, also would highlight um for the viewers that there's also another ask that council did endorse that was ambitious, that also from um a regional group fifty-by-thirty to reduce emissions by fifty percent by the year twenty-thirty. So again, we have a collective plan that was collaborative and regionally developed, developed, but have a significant gap in dedicated staff resources with the required time, you know, knowledge and expertise to really drive this. So for us to have any successful implementation implementation of the actual plan or other initiatives. Uh, as noted in the report, if the position is approved tonight, um, it's staff's intent to come back with report that will, in the annual business plan, that will outline some of our benchmarks and our proposed timelines, deliverables, costs, and anticipated outcomes. So just to continue to reiterate that without staff, uh, financial and staff resources, we are unable to implement the Transform WR Action Plan. We are unable to meet both community and corporate expectations for commission uh emission reductions or really to implement significant change in our uh climate change within our existing operations. We've presented three um routes that council could take based on the information we've provided in the report. So we could fund the position from the general levy. We could fund the position in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five from the existing infrastructure reserve fund. Or we could continue with slow and stage approach to implementation um with the existing resources that we have. So I guess kind of in conclusion, we heard tonight from a local business whose mandate is to improve efficiencies annually. And he noted the importance of environmental efficiencies to both their head office and their staff. That desire to work and live in a community that demonstrates commitment and leadership to environmental sustainability. So we've really are um advocating that onboarding a climate action staff person will demonstrate leadership and commitment to this community on climate action and provide resources to align with previous council-approved recommendations to provide resources to advance climate action. Um, and then with that, um, as I said, it's not just an RS, RCS position, so um, other members of SMT could probably answer some questions about what it might mean to their department. And then we can hear from Tova on kind of a perspective from the public. So with that, I will do it, Counsel.
Thank you, Anne. Counsel, do we have any questions? We'll start with Mayor Shon, her way around.
Thank you. Um, thanks for the the report and and the work on this. Um, it it's an important file for sure. One of the things I'm wondering about is available grants and how much time is spent looking for grants and and trying to get grants on climate, you know, climate initiatives and and along with that, how many are we missing because we don't have the uh resources to do it?
I mean, I think I'll start, and then I'll let other stuff in, but um certainly we have been successful in some grant applications. So we had uh FCM-supported a grant um to look at uh consumption use in five of our largest facilities, and you know, what are some tangibles that we might be able to implement in the coming years to reduce and some offsets and consumption? Uh, we have, and and Tweak certainly has uh been successful in securing grants for tree planning uh and things like that. I think there are some larger grants that are available, and they're very time-consuming. They uh require a lot of reporting, analysis, and that would be in terms of major retrofits, major investments, maybe in fleet transition of larger vehicles um and things like that. So I think that um there are bigger, larger grants that may be more sustainable in long term that we just simply um don't have the expertise, you know, to to write grants to meet the outcomes of the grants.
Would that be an expectation of this position then?
Yeah, hundred percent. I think that, you know, we'll continue with environmental grants for trees and trail maintenance and some of those um environmental works that we do annually in our work plan, but I think for some of the bigger global implementation of this transact or transform Waterloo plan, we'll have to look for those grants to be successful.
Counselor Cado?
Thanks, Chair, through you. This question's probably for CEO Brenneman. Um, could you provide some rationale as to why this position would have landed with RCS rather than being a direct report into your office to really keep their finger on the pulse and make sure that if we do hire this position, that they're really pushing this envelope forward? Um, I just have concerns of it kind of being housed with an RCS with uh, you know, providing access to other members of SMT. Just wouldn't it make more sense to be from your office?
So I think this is a little bit awkward. I think the report does speak to being over the CAO's office. Um, just just to.
My apologies. I just thought that maybe it was coming from RCS, so that's my apologies and oversight.
Yeah, no, to be to be clear, you know, um, you know, to be clear, this is a report that um Anne Anne's been working on for quite some time, even before her return to her position. And so we kept that uh continuity in place, um, but as part of the process, as the report outlines, we did as a senior management team discuss the fact that, um, you know, there had been some council input about the importance of this position, not just for the prestige uh as importance of the climate change stability initiative, but because of the coordination across all of the departments, no different than economic development and tourism. That's why it still resides back in the economic or sorry, in in the CAO's office. But as the report outlines as well, though, we also talked about the fact that this really is a position that all departments are a majority uh uh of of the departments will benefit from. And we will use the opportunity as a senior management team collectively to build a plan and priorities, working with the individual that would involve us working together and outlining those in the corporate business plan that we present to council every year. So in summary, it would be over the CAO's office, but we would collectively work on through the corporate business plan on the priorities and the implementation and present that to council uh as part and parcel of that.
Counsel, if you have any questions, Counsel Grant?
I'll just um through you, Counsel Bryant, to uh Counselor Cado, I'll just speak from the perspective of WAC. That was their recommendation as well, that this sit in the CAO's office.
Counsel Schwen, you're making faces, do you know? Okay, um, so we'll go and move on. Then we will hear from Tova Davidson, Executive Director of Sustainable Waterloo Region, who is joining us virtually. You begin when you're ready, Tova.
Thank you so much, Chair Bryant. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you for having me today and for letting me just say a few words about this potential role that you're looking at hiring, and I just want to start by saying how uh supportive actually I am of this role and what um a role of leadership the township would play in being the first township to actually have a dedicated system. a role of leadership the township would play in being the first township to actually have a dedicated sustainability staff in Waterloo region. We see in all of the municipalities across this region and in the entire catchment of SWR that having a person with expertise in sustainability and having that person in the CAO's office is a critical component to being able to move forward on both corporate and community climate action work. Corporate climate action work for the township is often done in partnership with us as well as the community work, actually, through our impact network program and having a person that can help to gather the data to get that data together and allow senior leadership and council to make decisions that are based on data is a really critical piece. Because what we're always looking for for all organizations is the ability to bring together better sustainability outcomes with reduced greenhouse gas emissions and therefore reduce climate change impacts, but in ways that are actually really good for the organization's other KPIs. So that can be the health and well-being of your residents. It can be better financial returns. It can be attraction and retention of businesses as Tony Lamentia spoke about earlier tonight. We know that business actually cares an awful lot and the number of businesses that are looking for places with the infrastructure and the people power to create a sustainable future for their organization is very much there. In the community work, SWR is very proud to be the leaders of the climate action work and the climate action program created transformed WR and we do that in partnership with ReGreen Solutions. And so that means that this one person would be able to look at both of those profiles, both of those pieces of work, both your corporate and your community. They would be able to help all other staff, be it your facilities, your fleets, finance, it works into HR, it's actually across a whole organization. And thus that decision to put it in the CAO's offices is a really good one. And then I just wanted to note that this sector is growing and that the awareness of climate change and the responsibility of a municipality to be able to address in a meaningful way to address climate change really is becoming more and more the language you're hearing across municipalities across Canada and actually around the world. So we're really happy to see that this is coming to council, hopefully for approval and then to final ratification next week. Happy to talk about how SWR can continue to support. We are here to help. We are a support organization and should this role be filled, we'd be eager to help them get up to speed quickly and to be able to be as effective as possible and connect them well within all the other sustainability leads across this region. So happy to answer any questions and just wanted to give a really strong endorsement of this idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Tova. Do we have any questions from this Davidson Council? No, seeing none. Well, thank you for joining us. And we will move on to the resolution. So before you counsel, you have a resolution that the Council of the Township of Woolwich consider report R ten twenty twenty-three respecting a staffing request. Do I have a mover for this report?
Could we have a conversation before we made a resolution? Because I think
Okay.
My lights aren't made up. I'm curious and other viewpoints.
Okay, do we want to move it in a second or put it on the floor for discussion? So I need a mover and a secondary and then we put it on the floor for discussion. And then we can always amend from there. So Counselor Grant, Seconder Counselor Kudel. Okay, discussion. Counselor Schwenk, did you want to start?
Yeah, I guess I've got a few concerns with how we're doing this, not opposed to doing taking actions on the climate change initiative. We've got some money. We've got to do, take actions and be efficient with it. So three concerns I have. Number one, we're spending a whole lot of money the last few weeks before budget season. We know how bad the budget's going to be. I'm a little bit concerned about our process in terms of we're pre-proving some expenditures. We've got a director of finance behind me. Fortunately, I can't see him go pale every time we spend more money. But I do wonder if this is something that should be waiting until the budget. We're not going to spend the money or hire the person this month anyway. So I'd like to see it's part of that more fulsome conversation. Secondly, we've got senior management team and staff who are experts in their field. I think we have to rely more on them on choosing these initiatives that we want to have happen. They know what their departments are doing. They see the opportunities. Let's put some pressure on them to come up with the ideas and what should be done first. Pushback from that I've heard in the past is who's got time to write the grant applications, find the funding, all that type of thing. That's where I would be prepared to spend some money starting today is put fifty thousand dollars on a budget to hire a grant application writer on a contact basis as required. The idea comes forward from staff. We want to go ahead with it. We've got someone who can write the plan efficiently. And then we're not, I guess, adding overhead without taking action. I think we're going to have a lot of pushback from our community that aren't necessarily opposed to doing things for the climate, but they're opposed to our tax hike that we're going to be approving and adding overhead.
Counsel, Counsel Burgess.
For you, Chair Bryant, I just kind of second what Counselor Schwenk's saying there. Right now, if we're going to be doing it out of the levy, sorry, out of the reserves, that's basically taking all the money we're putting in next year to put towards that salary and benefits and whatnot. So that would leave very little for taking on extra projects that we're supposed to be doing with that levy. And then if we're going through, sorry, with the reserves, if we're going through the tax levy version, I think it should be delayed and I would want to see it January during budget season. Because if we're talking another eight and a half percent right now, I don't want to see that going up. So I think it needs to be put in at that time and then make sure those numbers are within reason to be able to hire this position.
Counselor or Mayor Counsel, Mayor, Mayor Sean, so let's get this straight.
So if I could ask a question, Mr. Patrick, he's he's got his mic ready there. He knew what I was going to do. Remind us once again how much is in the reserves and how much will be put in the reserves without any increase to that this year?
Yeah, the use of Madam Mayor, oh, sorry, Madam Chairman, too, Madam Mayor. So I'm looking at probably seeing about about two hundred thousand dollars as the balance at the end of this year. So what we have currently is an ongoing annual contribution of one hundred ninety-three thousand with the recommendation from council with regards to the twenty-four budget preparation. It was decided that we would be looking at adding in addition a one percent for green and that would bump that annual contribution up to three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars annually. If that passes through the twenty-four budget. But right now we do have one hundred ninety-three that is going annually that has already been built up. And we have projected about two hundred thousand left at the end of this year.
And this proposal in total would take up around around what's in the reserve today ish for a two-year position.
Yeah, through you, Madam, I think what you're really looking at is probably what's in the, depending on where the position starts, because there is that range. So if it's at the bottom of the start, you're probably all of what's projected to be remaining at the end of this year, plus a little bit about what you're going to be putting into next or to, I guess, yeah, an extra for twenty-four without any increase.
I guess what I like about this proposal is is using money that is sitting in the reserve, knowing that we're, we are going to replace that money and then some even without an increase to that to that levy piece. I like that it it's giving a two-year commitment that we can see how the and I understand it's not a contract position, but it gives us two years to see how the position is working and and whether we like how we're funding it or whether we want to find some other way of funding it. And it also gives us a chance to see whether it might even fund itself in the grants that we get. So that's what I like about this proposal.
Counsel Grant. Thank you through you. Just in general, I I'm just recalling back to our budget deliberations of last year where I know the discussion about using this levy for a staff position was something that I think Counsel Schwenk struggled with at the time as well. And I, my opinion of that is slightly changed in that I think that this is a unique opportunity that we, like Mayor Sean said, that we have this reserve fund kind of sitting here and it's not necessarily doing anything with that money sitting there, that this is a really unique way for us to fund that position and see how it how it will roll out and whether or not it is something that we roll into a larger budget for staff position down the road in two thousand twenty-six. I I know we've talked about this a number of times and I do feel quite strongly that this is a position we need, but it's also a position that will fund itself down the road.
Counsel, Counsel Kudel.
I mean, through you to counsel, we have our outstanding activities list that we will got every time we get together and we've declared a climate emergency. So deferring this till budget deliberations again, because we have deferred this decision once. It kind of flies in the face of declaring it an emergency, doesn't it? Like if there's an emergency, you deal with it. You don't just well, we'll wait and see if we have the money to do something like that. To Counsel Grant's point, we do have a bit of a war chest built up. Is it the best use of those funds? Perhaps not. But if we don't use those funds for this position now, are we doing it from the general tax levy? I don't think any of us are going to be very comfortable doing that. So this is a bit of a pilot exercise, I would say. I don't think long term it's reasonable to be funding it from that source indefinitely. But this does give us an opportunity to test the waters, to see what this position could do, to see what kind of funding, as Mayor Sean said, suggested they could bring in to see if it can fund itself. And for all those reasons, I think that we need to move forward with this sooner rather than later.
Counsel Grant. I'll also through you to the council, I will also kind of bring up some of the discussion we had maybe in WAC, which was in in quite a big support of this role. But as Tova mentioned, this is an opportunity for the township to be a leader in this regard. And I know when we talked about budget deliberations about looking for collaborative opportunities between Wilmont and Woolwich, this type of position being put in place into into Woolwich gives us the opportunity to direct that further collaboration down the road that it could develop into this where we see other townships view this position as something that they would like to contribute to as well. And it could grow in that regard as well. So just something to also maybe consider.
Counsel Schwenk.
Love that idea, but why aren't we starting there as opposed to being, I guess, the guinea pigs, but costing the money upfront? Why not have that conversation with Wilmont? Or whoever wants to partner with us to develop a bigger and better plan. That's what sort of have that. I also listen carefully what Counsel Kudel said, because I understand the emergency argument and he's quite correct. At the same time, when you have the emergency, house is on fire, throwing a bucket of water on it, because the first thing you can do isn't always the best thing to do. Sometimes you're better off waiting, making the right decision and spending that money effectively. And I really struggle with that. Oh, the money's in the reserve, so no problem spending it. That's same it's a shell game. The money's coming over taxpayers' pockets no matter what. And hopefully we can recoup the money from grants, et cetera. But I'm just not quite convinced yet.
Counsel, Mayor Sean.
If I could respond to your analogy, I was at Karen Kelly's retirement on Saturday night and one of the comments that was made was when they heard that and I forget the exact words about one-on-one in charge. And that was when when Karen was in charge of a fire and the firefighters, all sort of things came down a notch and they knew that that everything was going to be under control and that all the pieces were going to fit together. And so if I use your analogy, this would be like a chief to pull all of the pieces together so that we're not just and and not to suggest that we're we're doing this haphazardly, but I I think if we're going to be really effective in dealing with this, we need to have a coordination and a coordination across the the corporation, if you will, and coordination in the community. And so I think it's a really important position if we're really going to move this file ahead.
Counsel, any further discussion? David?
And just weighing in on a couple of pieces. You know, with respect to senior management's take and look at recommending the interim use of the the greeting levy. I I mean, we all know from our past council, there was quite a bit of debate around that. However, what we're coming back to this council on is the fact that we believe there is some key foundational work that is required to implement the transformed WR strategy. And and let me be clear. A lot of the previous councils, you know, endorsed that plan. And even the, you know, the previous council endorsed the plan, but one of our members of council said, you know, but we don't even have the money in our budget to be able to implement everything that we're endorsing in this plan. There was a recognition of that. And in some ways, it took me back right to the fact that when I was first here, there was a great deal of passion in the community that we wanted to develop a twin pad recreation complex. And that passion exuded out into a focus on how we could afford to pay for and develop that particular community complex. And that decision was made. But then in the coming years, what we had to also evaluate was how how were we going to staff and resource? The recreation complex, the Brezlo Community Center, because the volunteers couldn't take on that new gymnasium and community center for a very, you know, great length of time. And so where I'm going with this is that it it's all well and good at times when we endorse very much motherhood and apple pie, concrete interests around, in this case, climate change. But when this previous council endorsed forty-five recommendations to to meet aggressive targets of eighty by fifty and fifty by thirty, it was never going to be able to be accomplished off the side of staff's desk because we have no in-house expertise or resources. There is no in-house expertise or resources to get those forty-five in the timeframes that have been set out. As Ms. MacArthur's report noted, one of the options is to can a third recommendation or a third option is, you know, to continue on in the staged phased off the side of the desk approach. But you're going to hear from delegates in the future when we're not hitting the eighty by fifty or the fifty or in the short term, the fifty by thirty. So what staff have tried to do here and your senior management team is to come back and say, how do we get started in a foundational to be able to try and set us up for success in the interim? You know, and and again, to set up the foundations to look at the forty-five recommendations, to develop plans, priorities, short, medium, long term, on how that can confidently be addressed. We're mindful of the fact about where we're at in terms of the budget parameters report. And so therefore, another factor in why we're saying, yes, we don't think it's the the best idea in the world, but it's a reasonable approach considering that this is a position that is needed if we are going to implement the transformed WR strategy. And you know, to the point that's been discussed about the opportunities that do exist when you have sufficient resources to look at grant funding. You've previously had a report from Economic Development and Tourism Officer in the past where she has in one position been able to leverage grants that have offset and provided funding to leverage projects that we had identified in our business plan and we sought out and successfully obtained grants to help mitigate the impact of the overall economic development and tourism program by that position, not only executing the plan, but by obtaining grants to help offset and provide an alternative side of revenue. So I provide this mainly to help with your discussion, but also so that you have a flavor for some of the things that we bandied about during our senior management discussions in terms of bringing this forward. And the other thing I want to address is the timing of all of this. You know, our recollection was that this needed to come back before budget. We were asked to bring this back before budget for council's consideration. Now, again, you're in the driver's seat. You can make whatever decision that you want to at this point, but we are following the request that was made of council to bring it back for your consideration at this point in time. And and that's, you know, that's why the timing is what it is. But ultimately, I'll end with this. You know, we we very much feel like, like, you know, sometimes, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place because we understand that there's a mix of feelings and emotions, even out in our broader community about climate change, it's sustainability initiatives and whether they're needed or warranted or not. But we're also, I can tell you on the receiving end of many emails from many, and I won't name names, community advocates that say, Mr. Brenneman, when are you and this council going to do something to to actually implement in aggressive way, the transformed WR strategy? Because we are in a crisis situation and that's their viewpoint. So we're very much stuck in the middle. But ultimately, at the end of the day, the other aspect you know, that we also look at is that you know, over the course of this year, you know, our hope would be that this position, if we can certainly find somebody with a generalist type of expertise that can support other departments, maybe just the type of person that Mr. Poupay and Mr. McGuire need when we're getting criticism from the community about clear cutting around stormwater management ponds or clear cutting around drainage issues, which many on council have been on the receiving end of concerns that, you know, do we have the in-house expertise? Are we benefiting from the expertise that are needed to properly manage these situations? You know, there are, there have been other situations, you know, with respect to tree cutting or trees being cut down. You know, there are other aspects to sustainability that where there could be side benefits is what I'm trying to say of this particular position. So at the end of the day, you know, as is traditional, you have a report before you, it's in your hands. But I wanted you to consider some of the things that yeah, we bandied about, you know, is the, you know, is the use of the levy perfect? No, it's not. But we think it's the right thing at this point in the process to build the foundation. You know, and ultimately, we think there are other benefits that will come from grant opportunities that will be able to see be sought and obtained, and also for that matter, side benefits for other departments that are able to benefit and leverage the opportunities and the expertise that exist.
Do we have any further discussion on this? Counselor Burgess?
Can I just ask for a recorded vote on this one?
Sure. Okay, leave that up to Mr. Sir.
My apologies, counsel. Sorry for getting ready. Are you ready for the vote?
Go ahead.
Okay. So the resolution on the floor is the Council of the Township Woolwich Considering Report R ten twenty twenty three, respecting a staffing request. One, approved hiring of a full-time climate and sustainability coordinator. And two, approve the staff position being funded from the Climate Action Green Infrastructure Reserve Fund in twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five with a respat staff report back during twenty twenty six budget deliberations on future funding options. All clear on the motion? Okay. So council's requested a court of vote. I'll ask in a random order, Counsel Grant, you're first.
In favor.
Counsel Burgess.
Against.
Counselor Kido.
In favor.
Counselor Schwint?
Opposed.
Mayor Sean's.
In favor.
And Chair Bryant.
Opposed.
That motion is defeated with three votes in favor and three votes against.
Okay, then moving on. Next on the agenda, sorry.
Yeah, can can we give some direction to staff on this? Like, is this a no, send it away and let's not consider it, or is there some other direction we can give staff?
Counsel Burgess?
Thank you through Chair Bryant. As I just said earlier, a bit and to Mayor Sean's point, I'm not opposed to this position. I just, when we heard that eight and a half percent, I think we just need to be responsible because we also have financial issues here that we got to deal with. So I think if my direction anyways would be bring up this discussion again come budget time.
Counsel, what do we want to do? Do we want to go with that or do we need a motion? How do we proceed?
A point of order, it's too late to defer the motion. Can we still give direction to staff to bring it up in budget?
Yes, through you, sorry, through you. Chair Bryant, Mayor Sean's, yes, I think you can still give direction to staff to bring it forward during budget.
Okay, so just leave it as direction or do we need any approvals for that?
Is that, is that the will of council?
Yeah, we're seeing nodding of heads. Everybody's in agreement. Add it to the budget process. Okay, that's what we will do then. Okay, then next on the agenda, twenty twenty four council meetings. Now we have Deputy Clerk Alex Smith to engage with council regarding the twenty twenty four council meeting schedule.
Thank you, Chair Bryant, and good evening, council. As you may recall, before this year's summer break in July, council directed staff to implement the current revised council meeting schedule, which reduced the number of meetings in the year and consists of one committee of the whole meeting and one council meeting a month with no break week in between. Due to planning application timelines, there are scheduled special council planning meetings when more than a one-week break occurs between meetings. Council requested that staff return in the fall for council's feedback on this type of scheduling and to seek direction on whether to continue using this method for the rest of the term of council. As a reminder, council meetings were previously scheduled using an ongoing three-week rotation, which consisted of a committee of the whole meeting one week, a council meeting the next week, and a break week the next. That three-week rotation was repeated over and over throughout the year to schedule council's meetings. As I mentioned, tonight's staff are looking for feedback and direction from council with the hopes of bringing the draft twenty twenty four scheduled to the November fourteenth committee of the whole meeting. And with that, I am open to council's feedback.
Counsel, do we have feedback for Alex? Mayor Sean's?
I wonder, I think there was a reason, but maybe someone can remind me why we did them back to back and not with a week break?
Thank you through you, Chair Bryant, to Mayor Sean's. That was for business continuity. So there was at the at the senior management level, there was discussions that having that extra week in between could cause delays in tenders being approved and other business being conducted by staff.
How's that different than putting a separate meeting in any other time in between the the meetings?
Through Chair Bryant, just to clarify, Mayor Sean's, do you mean using like the special counsel? Thank you for that clarification. Those can be, if if we do not need them, so it is planning items that initiate a special counsel planning meeting. If if our planning department says they don't need a meeting, then we cancel that and we don't meet. So that's the the difference there.
So you're you're talking about just tenders. So if we're at a committee meeting like today and we approve a tender, you want council to ratify it next week?
Right, I think I might defer this through Chair Bryant to Mr. Poupay. I had to speak on that.
Sure, thank you through Chair Bryant to Mayor Sean's. Yeah, that was part of the challenge is that if we if we bring a tender award report to a committee meeting with a gap week, so we'd have to wait two weeks actually before ratification, we would probably just be asking for a special counsel and committee then. So the thinking was just to squish them together and have committee counsel contrary, something like this evening as well. I have not been good at this all night long, and I apologize. Here I am. So sorry, watching public. But the other piece of this would be something like this evening because we need to get direction to move something forward to tender with work again. We see that as a bit of an unnecessary gap where we're sort of waiting to see. So we would appreciate a committee meeting, have that what we call the sober second thought for the following week and make a decision to move on. That's part of at least IS's perspective on on not having a gap in between committee and council.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any other feedback for Alex? Counselor Schwint?
I guess following off the merit, how's that impact the region's meeting schedules? So I think we should be somewhat cognizant of that. So your timeline fits in.
Yeah, the the region has committees one week, break week, and then council. So I, from from my perspective, it's a busy week when I've got all the meetings in one week, but I kind of like it because because then I've got another week where where I can focus on on some other things. I guess if if this is only for tenders, how often do we change our mind on a tender request?
You through Chair Bryant to Mayor Sean's. I think in general terms, if we have a decision at committee, but we're waiting a week for ratification, we're sort of in limbo. I guess I I'm trying to think of of times where you know, I think generally we're just sort of waiting for that direction. So I I could see that if we want to do a gap, we can, and again, this isn't a hill that the department is willing to tie on or fall on the sore here. If if there is a gap, we, and the council just needs to be aware that there may be a request from our department to elicit special council meetings at committees to try to either further the further the business. That that would be it because we would not want to deal with that extra gap.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I mean, that's that's my point. We do that on occasion from a committee meeting anyway. We have a count that I think we've got one listed tonight.
In fact, I can say that.
Right? And so you know, I I suppose what we could do is is in those cases, schedule a special council meeting at the committee. And if council said, you know what, we really need to think about this a little bit more, then we could defer it and have a special meeting the next week. But I I think often those tenders are there's not usually a lot of of sober second thought where we're rethinking it. That's just my opinion, but I I think that's my.
And through you, Chair Bryant, to Mayor Sean's too, I think the the piece two is that if you have a tender situation where you've exceeded the budget, you've got a challenging situation. Again, I think we would ask for a special that evening just to prepare council that we've already done that thought process. We provided a recommendation. So even in those instances, we would still look for direction from council on that same evening as opposed to wait the week then, which is fine for us. That's better business continuity and some would argue too, if we're if we're going to elect to do that. But but appreciate that. Just want counsel to beware.
Right, I mean, I I guess from my point of view, it doesn't matter a lot. I don't know what the rest of council thinks. I just thought it would seem to sort of spread out the opportunity for staff to to come to council rather than having it tight together.
Counselor Schwint?
And by that logic, I probably reduce the need for special planning meetings as well, would it?
Any other comments for Alex or sorry, Deanne? I didn't see you back there.
Sorry, I was just saying, as long as there is a meeting every other week, I think we're okay for planning meetings. And it may be the same type of situation where we have to reconvene as a special counsel as well.
Alex, did you get what you need?
Through you, Chair Bryant, I think the direction was to schedule as Mayor Sean's. I didn't see consensus, but to 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 produce a a draft where meetings are every other week. Is that the consensus I I saw or is it to continue with the trial that we've currently been doing?
Okay, Counselor Schwint, you had comments?
Just confirming the conversation over there. It's twice a month.
So what do we want?
A week.
Did I say twice a week? Twice a week? No, no.
They're just, they're just wanting to make sure you're not saying.
Sorry, yes, through you, Chair Bryant. Two meetings a month, but a break week in between. Is that clear?
Is that what everybody's? Everybody's good or?
I'm indifferent if I'm going to be incredibly honest with you. I'll be here when you tell me to be here.
I'm fine with whatever. So
I'm much the same.
Yeah, so whatever works basically, I think is what you're getting from people. Okay, everybody's good with that one? Then we'll move on. Counsel reports and updates. Anybody from council of anything they want to bring forward on this one? Counselor Schwint?
So we've had some conversations at council last time about agricultural on-farm businesses and the process Stan Tex going through. And I think it's I've heard that staff was gonna make it part of a larger zoning discussion as part of the bylaw or zoning by law overview this fall, which I think is a great opportunity for us to have a sober second thought and make sure we get this one right. At the same time, there are a number of people who've been contacted in the meantime and given, I guess, deadlines or instructions of we need to have a planner intentions by November first. And I don't think that's fair to those landowners to have us going into review process and their deadline is before we complete that review process. So my thought is, counsel, we should be saying those letters have gone out to landowners where there's perceived issues, we should make that all part of one larger process with zoning by law review. So people aren't forced to make decisions based on current rules that may or may not change the next two or three months.
I just have a comment I want to throw in here. I've had a number of calls from residents that are quite upset over this. They're being told to run a farm side stand. They need to have an occupancy permit. They have deadlines that they have to make these changes by, and if they fail to meet those deadlines, they're going to be hit with large fines. There's a lot of upset farmers out there right now, and I think we need to work this through and have some discussions and figure out what's going on because I've got a lot of angry, angry farmers right now. So we've got some issues I think we need to resolve. Deanne?
Um, so I I did send a message out to council about this, but what we'd like to do is where your concerns are with respect to policies or regulations that are in place. I'd like to have a discussion or even suggestions for how we can better run this agricultural enforcement. I'd like to have a discussion at council, I was hoping in November. So I did request any of those kind of comments or suggestions or anything in advance so that we could look into them and have response when we come back to council. So yeah, I'm happy to come back to council in November to have that discussion. If it's a request on a on a site-specific situation, I would request that you just approach us directly. We can have a conversation on that property because the the individual properties really do vary with what they're being told and and what what the request is from staff, what the timelines are from staff, they're different in every situation. So if there's individuals that are coming towards and you can give us an address and we can look it up and we can have that conversation, it's a lot easier for us to look at those individually because it's really not a blanket solution across the board.
Okay, one question I have though is farm stands. Why would they need an occupancy permit to sell produce on the side of their farm? They're not permanent structures. They're just like a seasonal thing for excess produce.
Yeah, I think what you're referring to is the zoning compliance, which was is also referred to as occupancy. And there's a confusion about the term that's requested there. So basically they're needing a compliance to to verify that they're meeting the zoning requirements. But I can't be specific on that unless I know the property address to find out exactly which one it is.
Okay, and is there a charge for that occupancy permit?
Yeah, it's not an occupancy permit.
Whatever it's called.
But yeah, there there is a small fee for it. I don't know what it is off the top of my head.
Okay, Eric, sorry.
Yeah. I think part of the problem is these are all site-specific and so different, and we're going to be wrestling with this up those two meetings in November. But at the same time, it's not fair for individuals to figure out their plan before we know our plan. So I think it is quite fair for us to say, hey, we're going to have a pause until after that decision in November. And that could be our official policy is, okay, let's just wait till December first or January first or whatever, instead of piecemealing it case by case.
I agree. Any comments from council on this one?
Counsel Grant? Thank you through you to those council or staff. I'm not sure which way to direct this, but with the consulting firm that is doing this work, is there something in our agreement that allows us to pause or are we like, I'm just wondering if by pausing, if we're going to be hit with a fee or we're going to lose out on that regard. I'm just, I just want to make sure there's no.
Um, so I can look into to that question specifically, but the other thing that I want to mention is that we're not going to have new policies or regulations in place in December. We're working on our official plan and on our zoning by law now. We're coming far with public meetings and and public open houses. But the actual regulation framework and the policy framework will take a lot longer to produce, and we're looking at at later next year, mid to late next year. So I I think if you're looking at a pause, the timeframe of December wouldn't really satisfy what you're looking for.
If we have to pause it for more than a month, we have to pause it for more than. If we have to pause it for more than a month, we have to pause it for more than a month. I don't think it's right for us to be in the midst of review and having us order president's seats to the fire on technicalities on the short term. I understand some are large technicalities and some are small, but as a point of principle, I don't think it's right for us to be forcing changes while we're considering making changes ourselves. And to make up pause, whether it's one month or six months in the scheme of things, is good policy, I believe.
Yeah, um, what I would suggest is because some things are in our control and could be changed through regulation and policy, it could be considered through the zoning bylaw review and the official plan review, well as others can't. I would suggest that if you are to make a pause, then maybe make the pause until we can come back in November and have this more wholesome discussion. And I can get the suggestions, um, and questions, comments, all those things from council in advance of that meeting, so we can prepare some responses.
Yeah, if we could put a pause on everything, that would be great. I think that would satisfy our farmers temporarily till we can get some of this resolved. Because they are upset. And that's putting it mildly in some cases. Okay, anything else on that, Eric?
Sorry, is that direction now or is that, what's the process for this?
Yeah, what do we do with this?
Um, through you, Chair Bryant, if you if you want to provide direction to staff, I think just sort of, um, general agreement around the council table would be in order.
Okay, do we have agreement around the table to pause this? Eric, that's a plus.
Until November, is that what I'm understanding?
Is that the timeframe? Is that what?
For now, if we get good answers in November, perfect, let's do it then, but at least have a conversation.
Yeah. You okay with that? Yeah. Mayor Shance, are you okay with that? Yeah, I think we have agreement then, that we come back with that. Hey, anyone else have any updates or reports? Nope, seeing none. Any outstanding activity list discussion? Seeing none. Notice a motion. We have one notice of motion referred to as the Till Death Do Us Part motion. Um, I believe this is Mayor Shance. Did you want to address this?
Yes, thank you. Um, I had a request from, um, MPP Catherine Fife, yeah, I think which, which one she's in. Uh, to support her, her, um, bill on, uh, ensuring that members, um, spouses especially can, uh, remain together when they're in long-term care and to, uh, uh, not split them up. So, um, this is a motion that really basically just, uh, supports that that motion that she's bringing forward in the house.
So that'll be addressed, that'll come up next week. Perfect. Okay, that brings us to adjournment of this meeting before we go into our following meetings. So do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? Counselor Grant, a seconder, Counselor Cado, all in favor, and that would be carried. So in closing, council would like to thank all who participated, attended, or tuned into the committee of the whole meeting tonight. We will now hold, continue our closed council meeting and then move into our special council meeting after that.
Chair Bryant, could you do the special meeting first?
Sure, we can do the special council meeting first. So what do we want to do there? I'll turn that over to Mayor Shance.
I might have a paper summary here, but I see, um, are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, uh, we have recommendations from September twelfth Committee of the Whole that the Council of the Township of Woolwich Considering Report title DS thirty-seven twenty twenty-three, support the proposal to erect a seventy-meter-high wireless communication tower on lands. And then there's a couple of provisos on that. So I guess we need a motion to, uh, to to pass that recommendation. Counselor Cado, seconded by Counselor Schwint. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you, and then we have, uh, bylaws to confirm all actions and proceedings of this, um, meeting that we just had. Again, I have a mover in the secondary, Counselor Grant, Counselor Cado, all those in favor. And that's carried. Thank you.
Jeff circled it. Sure, got us ready to go on that. Um, I need, so do I adjourn then?
The special counsel, so a motion to adjourn our special council meeting, Counselor Schwint, Counselor Bryant, all those in favor. That's carried, and then I think we move into closed. Do I need a motion to move into closed? Moved by Counselor Grant, seconded by Counselor Bryant, all those in favor. Thank you, that's carried, and we'll wait a moment until, uh, the clerks put us into, uh, private room. Oh, so, uh, while they're doing that, I should, um, thank everyone for joining us. Or or Ca- Counselor Brian can do that too. Uh, we're going to go into closed session now. I see, I didn't read the reason.